Second, Selectmen's meeting, six o'clock. Can I call the meeting order and can I get a real call, please?
Veronica Kell present.
Joseph Schenk present.
Wayne Miller present. Can I get a, join me in the pledge, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, and that's the meetings being taped, recorded and broadcast on Channel Nine as a Zoom call. 1.4 liaisons and border organizations. So this is your first official regular Selectmen's meeting, Mr. Shank. Like to welcome to the board and congratulations.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
So traditionally, what we've been doing when we get a new board member is assign liaison. So we split it up into basically thirds. The, we have general government, public works and elected boards committees, officials and public safety. So Veronica has been handling the general government. I've been doing the public safety and Mr. Klein was formerly did the public work. So I don't know if you have an express interest, Joe, in filling in that. You're gonna have to do this again in a couple of months anyway, when I'm out of here. So.
I mean, if, leave it the way it is. I'll just pick up where Don Klein is if it makes it simple for everybody.
I think so. Veronica, do you think that's all right?
It's okay with me. I just want to point out one thing. We had moved, if you look at the liaison assignments, were, you know, designations that are in our packet, the library trustees and the Townsend Housing Authority in the original list weren't anywhere. And so we talked about this when Don was still on the board. It had been pointed out to be that they weren't in any of the lists. So I had the library trustees and the Townsend Housing Authority, and I'd like to keep those until April, if that's okay with you, Joe, if.
I'm looking at, under the public works, there aren't both. They're actually, so I'll just scratch out the towns, the library trustees and the housing authority.
Yes, until, until April, and then we'll go from there.
I'm fine with that.
Do we need a motion, Wayne, or?
I don't know. Jim, do we need a motion for assignments?
If you have one.
Okay, can I get a motion, please?
Do you want me to do it, Wayne, or? Yeah, I'll do it. I move that we keep Veronica Kell with general government as written on this, on the sheet, Wayne Miller with public safety, and assign Joe Shank to public works and elected boards and commissions and officials.
Hey, all those in favor?
I.
Veronica Kell, yes.
And Wayne Miller, yes. So board organization. Traditionally, Joe, the clerk is assigned to the first piece and then vice chair and chair. So I'll leave it up to you guys what you want to do, since I'm gonna be gone in two months. So I am more than willing to give up the chair if you want it, Veronica.
Well, I'm more than willing to take over the chair if you're willing to give it up.
I am. I'm ready to wind down, so.
Well, I picked a motion. I mean, I know, Wayne, you and I talked and, you know, you've done an outstanding job trying to keep this together for three years almost, and you've been under the gun with just two people. And that's, I, I can't thank you enough for staying with that. I think the last two months, if you can have a little bit of downtime, the cruise a little bit, I think it might be better. And I'll make a motion that we appoint Veronica Kell as the chair.
And can we do two motions at once, Jim, with me as vice chair? I'll stay as vice chair?
Yeah, you put in one, one motion, sure.
Okay.
Make it all three of us, Joe.
Yeah, just get it up.
I make a motion that Veronica Kell be the chair, Wayne Miller be the vice chair, and Joseph Shank be the clerk.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Veronica Kell, yes.
Joe Shank, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes. Jim, just a point of order. Does that mean Veronica takes over the meeting now as chair?
Unless she wants to give you the, the one fair.
I, I think, Wayne, if it's, if it's okay with you, I would like you to continue to chair for today.
Okay. And Joe, you're okay with that?
Yeah, I'm fine with that. Absolutely.
I didn't know. I was thinking about that one. I was like, how does that work? Okay, all right. I'll, I'll finish up for tonight and then Veronica's all yours tomorrow. Chairman's additions, deletions. I think we had two from you, Veronica.
Actually, I now have five, but they aren't really additions and deletions. I had wanted the CARESAC round two funding. We had discussed this on Thursday in the work session. And I guess I thought that was gonna be on the agenda, but it didn't make it in there for both housing and the fire department. So that was one.
That's a simple one.
So that was the CARESAC. Number two, and I, I'm not sure what all I sent to you, because I think I sent two things in two separate emails as I thought of them. But the other things I was thinking of, there was a request from Karen Clement to be put on the agenda. Wayne, I think I forwarded it to you. It was for a program that I believe it's the Friends of the Library wants to do in the spring, and she wanted Board of Selectmen approval for it.
Don't remember seeing that one.
I, I can hunt it up in my email. I don't see her on here, and it didn't make the agenda. So that, that would be my second thing. So I, I'm sure it's in my email somewhere. Number three is the minutes from December 2nd, November 23rd and November 17th. I sent my updates to Carolyn just today. She sent us those a couple of weeks ago.
Okay.
And I hadn't had time to review them, but I, I did review them and sent her the changes I wanted. I don't know if you guys are ready for those.
I haven't seen them yet, so I'll, I'll, I'll take a pass on that one tonight.
Okay, so we'll move that to next week.
Yeah, I wouldn't have any say in that anyway, because I was not on the board.
Okay. That was three. Number four, I would like to move 4.7 to be four, before 4.11, because they're all, all four of those are kind of related.
Yeah, I, I thought that was kind of weird too, so I'm fine with that.
So you're.
Move 4.7 down to 4.10 and a half.
Okay, that works. And then 3.1. I had wanted, I might have written open space. I know open space and recreation committee. I thought that was already posted, and I was looking to see if there were any responses. That was something that I probably put on, but the thing that needed to be looked at was the Agriculture Commission posting. So maybe have that for the next meeting.
Okay, so we'll pass over 3.1?
Only if, are there people to appoint? There was nothing in the packet.
Have not seen any yet.
Okay, then I agree, pass over 3.1. And the other thing was the planning board had a request for 43D. It's, we're getting close to the time for the warrant for town meeting to, to have things ready for March 1st. And I think at the last meeting, I had mentioned that I knew the planning board. This is only because I was on the planning board until September, and I knew what we were working on. And I thought that there was a request, I know, for two, two things with the DLTA grants that we had been working on, the 43D expedited permitting, the locations for those, and then also the 55 and over bylaw, housing bylaw. So those are two things that the planning board have been working on, and my concern is that we're getting close to March 1st, and we don't have, we have one meeting left before March 1st unless we do work sessions in between.
I think we may have to with that one, because I, I don't have anything on that, so I'm really not quite sure what they're asking for, so.
See anything in my packet.
No, there's nothing in the packet at all, but I'm the liaison for planning, and I, I have been getting emails about this, and I guess I thought it would be on the agenda today, and it isn't.
Mr. Chairman, the, the, the bylaw deadline of March 1st for annual town meeting articles is, it's real, but in the past, it has been practiced that placeholders have been allowed. So if there's still work to be done on the 55 and over and the expedited permitting of the 43D, they can submit placeholders to get them on the warrant, and then once the article language has been finalized, we just insert that in place. The, the additional discussion about the DLTA grant came just today, and that's the one I think you were referring to, Wayne, which is, the plan would have a deadline of three o'clock today to submit your DLT and for assistance in doing some GIS mapping for the master plan. And Lance executed a letter and asked if I would execute it in support of the application as well by the three o'clock deadline with the proviso that the letter also said all of it is contingent upon a favorable vote of the Board of Selectmen this evening at the meeting. So that's the DLTA piece I think you were referring to, Wayne. I do need to add that under additions and deletions tonight.
So let's do the DLTA, and we'll ask the planning board to do a placeholder for their warrant article, and we can discuss it at a further meeting. Does that work, Veronica?
I, I suppose, because I, you would want to. I know that the 43D and the 55 and over were both DLT grants as well. That, that work was done with a DL, with two separate DLT grant funding. And I, I know that there is a property matrix, and one of the properties is a town property that we need to look at and sign off on. So I think, yeah, we should get paperwork on that, Jim, and that we can review for our next meeting and put it on that agenda.
Certainly, I can reach out to Beth tonight and just have her get us whatever it is that they've got to this date. So we have a start on it.
Okay. All right. Public comment period. Anybody have anything to bring up?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Laura.
I'd like to make a comment, basically on behalf of the many volunteers that offer their expertise and their time to our town. We had a joint meeting last Thursday night with Board of Selectmen and the Housing Authority and the Trust. And during that meeting, it was brought up that myself or Chaz or Joan hadn't made a phone call or hadn't arranged something that was supposed to get back to the town administrator. And we're volunteers, and we work other jobs. We're not paid staff. So the hours, I can't, half my day today was on the DLT and with Beth back and forth, and this is every day. Most of us on these boards do something every day for this town. No one's asking for a thank you, but no one's asking to be offended or insulted either. So that's my public comment for tonight, and I hope that will be taken to heart. Thank you.
Thank you.
I could just offer an apology in response to that, because it was my comment that, that offended, and the intention was not to offend Lori, you, Chaz, or Joan. The intention behind my comment was to make the point that a month had gone by and efforts had been made to reach out to do the thing that had been committed to being done. And it's not that the answer was, we don't, we don't have the time right now. The answer was, the agreement that was made wasn't the agreement that was made. So there's a difference of opinion as to what was committed to, but there is video to back up everybody's comments that night. But if it offended you, I do apologize. That was not my intention. My intention was to move the project.
Excuse me, but I didn't really want to start a conversation on this, but if there's a volunteer that hasn't done something that you think they should have done, you should have made the phone call and reminded us. That is not fair to do to the people that donate their time when paid staff is telling them they should have done something. I was offended. I was insulted.
Yes, someone needs to mute.
Whoever has a radio on.
Is there a way to mute?
I just did.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
Hi, Wayne. So while speaking to Lori's point, the letter I wrote to the board this afternoon, will that be read?
It'll be addressed in the, it'll be addressed as it is on the agenda, so.
Thank you.
We'll take it up then.
Thanks.
All right, let's move on to 2-1. Kathy, are you on? Thought I saw her.
Yep, I'm here. You have to figure out how to unmute. Hi, everyone. I asked to be put on the agenda just so that I could update the public more about the census. It went out January 14th. It was mailed out. It's coming back. A lot of people are returning them. I'm just asking everyone to please update their census, return it to us. It really helps with obtaining grants, having that updated with the number of residents that's in town. It helps when you come to vote. You're not an inactive voter, so you don't have to fill out the extra forms. So if everyone could do that, they can put it in the drop box out by the bench by the back door. They don't have to come into the building. They don't have to mail it. They can just drop it off, and that would be greatly appreciated. The next thing is dog licenses. We have one more month until the late fees begin. People are licensing their dogs, but it would be nice if they continued to do so and did it before the late fees of $10 begins on March 1st. And we will be announcing the number one dog tag winner in a couple of days here. We're gonna pick that, and they will have the number one tag and a blanket to go with it. So, and we'll put that up on the website and announce it, have you announce it at the next meeting, if you wouldn't mind, just so everybody can see who our number one dog is in Townsend. And then the last one is the annual election nomination papers are available. You have until March 5th to take out papers, and they're due back March 8th at 5:00 PM. There is information on the website under the news and announcements. You have to go to the second page, and it has the open positions. It has the dates that you need to know about when to return papers, when the election is. And you need 41 valid signatures on your nomination papers, and electronic signatures do not count for this. So we don't mind giving out extra papers, but Joe Shank did a good job on his. So if he can do it, I'm sure others can do it.
I sort of plug Kathy.
Yeah, really. Well, I just happened to think of it. So, so if you, you have any questions, now's the time, or you can, if any of the public has questions, feel free to call our office.
Kathy, I have a question.
Okay.
The vote, the town election in April, will there be mail-in voting? Do we know that yet? Or will it still be, or will it just be absentee as opposed to anybody can mail in?
Right now, all we know about is the absentee, because the early vote by mail ends March 31st.
So they may, or they may not extend it.
Okay, so if, you know, people are afraid of COVID, just put it on the absentee ballot application and mail it in to us, or drop it in the drop box, and we'll be more than happy to mail out absentee ballot.
Thank you.
It's more important to get the people to come out and vote.
Okay, thanks, Kathy. Please, anybody that wants to run, my job is open. I've never said this in my life, but come take my job, please.
Thanks, Wayne.
Thank you. Okay, 3-1, we're skipping. 3-2, consideration of appointment, treasure collector candidate Jared Aponte.
Mr. Chairman, your last meeting, you had asked for some additional time to consider the candidate. And I know that Veronica, for one, has put a lot of time in. She's had conversations with members of the finance team, to my understanding. I've spoken to each of, about the candidate. So we do have Mr. Aponte on the call. If you have questions of him this evening, you do have his information in your packets again this week. So whatever the pleasure of the board moving forward, he does come as the recommended candidate from the finance team with whom the treasure collector most closely and most often works.
Okay. I've reviewed this already, and I, I have talked into Vicky and to Lori at length, and I'm respectful of the, the process that we've gone so far. So I, I, I like the experience. I know he's not necessarily 100% check-in-the-box qualified each one we're looking for, but I'm leaving my opinion based on the, the review and interview committee. So if they're putting him forward, then I have, I have confidence in, in the appointment. Veronica, I know you had raised questions about this.
I did, and I guess mine is based on from the posting for the position. The qualifications are a bachelor's degree in business administration, accounting, finance or related field, three years of progressively responsible experience in accounting or financial management, or any equivalent combination of education and experience. So when I put those two together and look at the equivalent combination of education and experience, I'm assuming that someone would have about seven years worth of experience when they came into the treasure collector position. So I guess going off of that, am I allowed to ask questions?
He's, he's here for your, for your questions, sir.
So Jared, hello. Hi, I'm Veronica. I'm one of the selectmen, and I, I guess my questions are, over the time, the, you know, I, I see less than three years' experience as an assistant treasurer. So I guess my question for you is, what have you done outside of work to prepare yourself for this position?
Sure. So I am currently doing some consulting work. I've had experience with all different aspects of the treasurer collectors department, including some of the more complex things such as borrowing tax title, year-end submittals. I'm not currently enrolled in school, but it is on my short to-do list. What I, very shortly, I would like to start going back and obtaining my bachelor's degree. Besides that, though, I am involved in multiple communities throughout Massachusetts. I worked for a company, Mass Munifin, and, you know, I have had the opportunity to have exposure to all different aspects of the department. I'm always, I'm very eager about ongoing education, and, you know, I'm hoping that even before I'm getting ready to retire, that I'll still be learning. This job is very important to me, and I take it very seriously, the responsibilities. I don't live in Townsend, but I will treat everything as if, you know, I do.
I, I guess I have a question, and this is something that I know our former treasure collector was working on at the Board of Selectmen request. Cash operations in town is something that was being, the exploration of that started back in the fall. I'm curious what experience you've had in the two towns that you have worked in as far as cash operations go.
Sure. Could you maybe give me a little bit more of, of what you're looking for in regards to cash operations?
Did cash come in at a single point, at several points? Were you ever involved in kind of a systems analysis type of thing to look at how perhaps that could be improved or changed or modified?
Sure.
And I, I'll give you a little more background, and I'll, I'll use an example, Jared. So our recycling center is a cash operation. It doesn't have internet. It's not capable of it. It's not the greatest system, so I think that's what, Veronica, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's kind of the.
You got it. And other places as well.
That was just the one.
But that's a good example of one place in town where we have an all cash operation.
Sure. I am huge on backup documentation. I'm also very big on spreadsheets, very fluent in Excel and Google Sheets. I believe you can never really have too much information, so lots of checks and balances in these spreadsheets where, you know, A equals B, which equals C. You know, I'm not somebody who cuts corners or is okay with, you know, being off by a penny discrepancy. I'm a very, you know, down-to-the-cent kind of person, and I always would want to have the documentation in case of an audit. I would want to, I would want to be able to quickly find whatever information is needed, and I do feel like that is how I, how I work on a day-to-day basis.
Thank you. Going back to, Joe, did you have a question?
I first. Yeah, I do.
All right, I, I have, I have a couple more. Going back to the education piece of things, it would be nice to have a certified treasure collector as our treasurer collector. Have you explored what qualifications are required for a treasurer collector? And if you have, how long do you think that it would take you to obtain those qualifications?
Sure. So I am in the program right now. How it works is you have to pass a test, which is half of the scoring system, and then it's also a point system where years of experience at work, as well as a college degree, you can work towards that. Due to COVID this year, unfortunately, there were no classes. I'm hoping that we will have classes this year, and depending on how far I can get with my education, there is a chance that in 2022, I can be a certified treasurer, which I will be working very hard to get that.
Okay, thank you. So you are, and how long have you been enrolled in the program?
Sure. So this year would have been my second year taking classes this fall.
So there's something that you've done outside of work.
I'm nervous.
That qualifies you to be a treasurer, you know, to work towards that, so.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
All right, the next one probably isn't a fair question, but. But I, I think I'm gonna ask it anyway. If you were to take this position, and you did during the time that you are working in Townsend, or if you were to be offered this position and you accepted, and you did, over time, 2022, 2023, become a qualified or a certified treasurer collector, how long would you expect to stay in Townsend?
Sure. So my objective is to get certified, remain certified with the town. You know, a realistic number, depending on how I grow with the town, I could say I could commit to 10 years. I don't want Townsend to continue to be in the situation where you have to keep hiring somebody. You know, if, if I'm given the opportunity, I will, you know, make it worthwhile for the town, and it will be a, it will be longer than, you know, just a couple of years, most definitely.
I, I know we can't, you know, hold you to that.
I, I understand. That's a great question.
But it's a, a training issue. Okay, Joe, go ahead. It's your turn.
How are you doing, Jared?
Doing well, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim, if I don't know if I get off track, please stop me. I just have a question. Can we ask a question about his application that I have? I just have a question. Can we ask a question about his application that I have in front of me, his work experience?
Absolutely.
Jared, I'm just, as you know, I'm, I'm been in business a lot of years. When I see a resume that comes in front of me, no disrespect or anything here, but I'm seeing almost every year you're bouncing from job to job. Do you have a reason for that? Are you moving forward? And every time you move up, are you progressing in your job that you're doing? Can you explain the job experience to me?
Sure. So if anything, I was expecting that question. It was a mix of growing opportunities where I am, you know, moving up. And it was also a bit of, you know, personal life experience where my partner and I did decide to move down to South Carolina. And unfortunately, it wasn't exactly what we were hoping for. Had that not happened, I probably would still be in Gardner. I love this work and unfortunately, my longevity on my resume doesn't, in my opinion, accurately reflect.
Okay, now, in your work experience, I mean, in these jobs that you've been at, in your words, how do you work? How well do you work with other employees? How do you get along? How do you fit in?
Sure. So I think that you could reach out to just about anybody I've worked with in the past. And not only will they tell you that I'm a great worker, but they'll tell you that I am easy to work with, professional, always willing to help and go the extra mile, whether it's my department or not. You know, I'm very approachable. I've worked with people who, you know, you're nervous to go into their office and I would never want to be that way. So, you know, I don't need a whole lot of supervision. And if I'm very open and honest with, with my work and where I am at with things, if I need help with something, I will always ask. You know, there will never be any surprises with me in that seat.
Very good. Thank you.
To that point, Joe, I can tell you that the committee did do his reference checks and not only the folks that he listed, because, I mean, who's gonna give you a, a name of somebody that's gonna speak badly of them? But people that have worked around him in other communities or in his consulting. And to one of them, they say just those things about Jared, that his work product is top-notch and that he's enjoyable to be around, that the stress of the work doesn't upset him, that he just keeps a steady hand on things. And to, to one of the people that were spoken to, they all, they all highly recommended him.
Uh, and, and I've, I've heard that. I spoke with Vicky and Laurie today, or yesterday, excuse me, and they, they spoke very highly of you and I think they would look forward. I also have some people outside that have mutual friends, believe it or not, that have spoken very highly of you and your work ethic and the character of yourself. So with that said.
Wow.
See where, see where we go.
Thank you guys so much. I, I really appreciate those words.
Any other questions, guys? Comments?
I'm good.
Can I get a motion, please?
What are we voting on?
To consider appointment.
You have under 3.2, Joe, a motion to consider might be moving to appoint Jared Aponte as treasure collector contingent upon successful contract negotiations, medical exam, and a query check.
And a one-year probation, probationary period? It's not written there, but it was with the last appointment.
Yep, that, that is the town's standard policy. So that would be good to have in there.
So do I make that motion?
Yep, just read it as it says, and add the one-year probationary period.
Consideration of appointment Jared Aponte, contingent upon successful contract negotiations, medical exam, query check, and a one-year probationary period.
Second.
Okay, others in favor?
Joshankai.
Veronica?
Veronica Cowell, yes.
And Wayne Miller, yes. Jared, welcome aboard. We'll get, be in negotiations later.
Really looking forward to it. Thank you guys so much. I appreciate it very much.
Welcome aboard, Jared.
Thank you so much.
Make us proud.
I will. No doubt about it.
Thank you.
All right, next is for one, meeting business. Review, discuss, approve, amended, donation, lease, license agreement regarding the senior center. Jim, you wanna take?
Wait, um, this is a, a topic that has been before the board for a bit of time now. Back in December, the board voted to execute the license and donation agreement that had been drafted by council. And that was forwarded off to, um, to the donor. And what's been presented back from the donor is not the document that you executed and approved, but one that is more like, looking at the file, more like the version of the donation agreement from eight years or so, from a different project. Wayne, you and I spoke about this last week when it came in. Because counsel had drafted the original document for you, reached out to counsel to see if this was copacetic and it still covered the town. He did send a, an email where he offered several comments, but in the end, he said it's a policy decision of the board. And if you're satisfied with this document, that it would be appropriate to move to adopt this and execute it.
Okay, do you have guys have questions?
I, can I, Wayne? Now, I, I've kind of been following this a little bit. And I, I see the original document that Town Council and both of you kind of drew up. And I, I, I wasn't involved in it. It seems very lengthy. By reading it, it's, it's kind of gets a little contradicted there. And by reading the second one, my opinion, we have Sterilite Corporation in our community that has absolutely given so much to our community that, you know, we need to try to make it simple, easy. Whatever we as a board can do to make it that way, instead of having somebody jump in hoops. You know, I, I had a person from Sterilite in my office, which known for over 40 years, rather disappointed the way this whole process is going. I know we need to protect ourselves, but the more we stay out of this contract, we just give them permission to do, the better it is. That way, when we're done, he gives it to the town. If we start getting involved and we procrastinate this much more, this project, I have been told, has cost him huge amount of money above what this originally, he was planning to spend for our community. So if it's possible to go to this simple, I've read the simple, I've read the long version. I think the two pages, one and a half pages gets us exactly where the seven page gets. And I, I think we need to move forward and let them get this thing going.
Veronica, anything from you?
Oh, yeah. I, I did work with Adam on the one that was drafted. And I did compare it to the 2008. Yes, it's way wordier. The one that we signed in December that Sterilite did not get until a month later, after our signature. So they've only had this for maybe a little over a week, week to two weeks. We did not sit down with them when we worked this up. And I, I will say that we, we, the town, accepted this gift a year and a half ago, almost. And it took a year until we even got to the license agreement. So it's been probably maybe a month since I've been on the board. So it's been a long time, but I compared what Adam wrote with the 2008. And I did have some questions because there were things that he put in that weren't in the original, the 2008 agreement, like number eight, no estate created, the termination or the term, number five with a termination thing. I had questioned, and I have my email where he and I, Adam and I, went back and forth on this. I do think that there are things in the one that was presented to us just a few days ago, end of last week. I think I saw this on Friday.
Someone muted, muted phone number person. All I'm hearing is rustling.
So maybe that's me.
No, I don't think it's you. No.
Papers?
No, because their yellow border keeps coming on, which means they're making noise.
Oh, I don't know.
Jim, can mute it?
Don't know which one it is.
Just the one that says the phone number. Everybody else has a name on it.
Okay, keep going, Ronnie.
Okay, so before I keep going, I want to say, number one, that we need to make this happen. So I, but I do think we need to sit down and look at it. For example, in the original 2008, and that's me rustling the paper, there's a number five insurance, and I think that we do need that. It's not in here at all. When I went through this, number one, to facilitate construction, the town shall vacate the existing structure and shall issue a written notice to proceed to allow the donor to enter upon the site to construct the facility. In what we wrote, we expected that the senior center and the library would remain open. So I guess I want to know exactly what it means. I think we need to come to terms with what it means to vacate the existing structure. We have a kitchen in there that is supplying meals to seniors right now. So what does that mean? I need further definition. So I, I think that we, the Board of Selectmen, should direct the town administrator to work with Sterilite to get this defined. And there was a construction sequence. It's exhibit A, hours of work, traffic control on Dudley Road. And then what the contractor, you know, shall maintain access to all local residences and businesses of all times. I think we need an exhibit A to go with that last sentence. What does that mean? Vacating the existing structure. To me, that means we're shutting down the library, senior center, and the kitchen there.
Yeah, that's not acceptable.
And, and so.
I, I don't know. I, I know I have construction, I build houses. So when there's construction being done and you're gonna tie into an existing building, you're gonna need to shut some part of that down because you can't have people tearing. I don't, I, I mean, how simple can this be? Let's just call, I believe Gary Shepherd's in charge, get him into a meeting, let's iron it out. Let's stop going back and forth with papers for, just make a meeting call, tell them what we need to figure out, get the approval, and move this on. I, I'm just gonna tell you what I think's gonna happen. If we keep procrastinating this, the town of Townsend is going to lose a great asset to that addition. And I don't think that's the right thing to do.
Um, I agree with you, Joe. I think we, as far as back and forth goes, this agreement, we didn't even get anything written until November. We signed it in December. They got it in January. So they were handed it once. We were handed it back once. Granted, it's been a long time since acceptance. But I, I do think there are things in here that need to be looked at. I, I don't think they're insurmountable. I think that if we sat down, we could get this together, but we do need to sit down. So maybe what we should do is do a work session soon with Mr. Shepherd.
So Jim, can you set something up for next week with Gary and the three of us and just iron this out and be done with it?
Do you have, you get those with you now so we can?
Hold on, where's my phone?
I will be on the phone.
It's virtual. It's virtual, right?
Yeah, everything's virtual. I'm having a virtual sales meeting this week, which is stupid.
But if we do it early mornings, better by far.
Uh, this week? Are we looking at this week or are we looking at next week?
Well, one, I mean, I, I'm here if we, if we have time.
I'm tied up. I'm tied up this week, early.
Okay.
Monday, then, the eighth.
Monday, I'm free till noon.
What time in the morning, Joe, is good for you?
The earlier the better, because I, like you said, I'll be away, so I'd rather.
Do nine o'clock?
Yeah, nine o'clock is fine. And Jim, you'll send us some kind of link or something that we're gonna all get on?
I will. I'll confirm, make certain that Gary's available. So nine o'clock on Monday, the eighth.
Yep.
And see if Adam can join as well.
I just think it's something we need to move forward, just get.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree, Joe. I just have a problem with changing a document we submitted without discussion. I mean, that's not how this is supposed to work.
Well, and, and I get that, you know, but if Ronnie's referring to a document back in '08, which I haven't reviewed or seen that, which is less involved than what we just drew now. I mean, I don't know why we have to have it so tight that, you know, the poor person doing it is costing him hundreds of thousands of dollars per day.
And I'll say this because I did talk to Adam about this and he's, his job is to protect the town. He's putting it in there to protect the town, not Mr. Shepherd, not the, the Stones. It's, it's to make sure that we're, we don't have any, you know, issues with coming back.
And I respect that, but if we've accepted, how many buildings? We've accepted a fire station, a highway garage, a senior library. And there hasn't been any issues. It's gone very, very smooth. So let's try to keep it smooth. That's my opinion.
I don't disagree, but I do, it hasn't been smooth, put it that way. Encourage you to talk to Mr. Kreidler about that.
I, I would just like a few other things in here. It's, it's too simple for me. But it's simple enough that we can just add a few things.
Yeah, that was my discussion with Adam, too, is the, the few things that are highlighted, like the insurance. I've never seen a contract without insurance requirement. So those two or three things that he's discussed with me, I encourage you guys to reach out to him as well. So, but let's, let's get that done next Monday and we'll move on from that.
I'm good with that. If, if Sterilite is good with it.
If not, then we'll, we'll find another day.
Right.
All right, for to discuss vote joint purchase agreement for health insurance. Jim, I know you had a discussion with the, I forget the committee.
Yep, the insurance advisory committee.
Yes, thank you.
Just, um, we had originally had it scheduled with Bobby Jones, who is the, the union rep for all of our four AFSMI groups. And just wanna offer condolences. Bobby lost his mom unexpectedly. So he wasn't able to make that meeting, but we did, with his permission, we did continue the meeting and had each of the AFSMI groups in and talked about the fact that this is a joint purchase arrangement that is being contemplated. It isn't about changing the benefit level. It isn't about in any way of cutting in on the, the rights that the union employees have under the law in Massachusetts regarding their health insurance. This is an opportunity to pool with other communities to reach a critical mass of insured employees such that the insurance company is required to give claims data. It's, it's, doesn't have identifying information by person, but it has all the claims and the costs. That then allows us to get a more competitive bid in the marketplace because the people looking to provide the bids are able to actually see what our group risk profile is. So, and having had that conversation with the members of AFSMI, a couple of whom I think are on or were on the call tonight, the feedback I got was recognizing that it isn't changing the benefits nor getting in the way of their rights under their contracts, that they're okay with going forward with it. Having said that, there is one outstanding issue that Adam is doing some final work on, which is in the very first paragraph of the document. I know that we have, we did have Kevin, yeah, we have Kevin Pecos, our consultant, on the call as well, if you have any specific questions of him. There's a reference to chapter 32B, section 12, that this joint purchase arrangement is being done pursuant to chapter 32B, section 12. And there's a discussion right now that's being, um, being run to ground about whether or not that's a local option statute that has to have been accepted prior to us being able to do this, or whether it's not. accepted prior to us being able to do this, or whether it's not something that the town meeting actually has to accept. So I know that, again, Mr. Pecos is here. He's done a number of these in other communities and other parts of the state where this hasn't been an issue. So Adam is just trying to get us to yes on that. So if you're inclined this evening to vote to move forward with the JPA, the request for proposals is teed up and ready to go next week. If we're to be a part of it, we would be the, the benef, the benefactors of, of a better quote from the carriers down in the marketplace. But if you are inclined to say yes, I would just ask that you make it contingent upon council's satisfaction regarding the issue of Chapter 32B, Section 12.
Okay. Questions?
I had expected to see a purchase agreement in our packet, and there wasn't.
It's the, it's the document that you already had, that council had made review on, that you had in your packets and had the opportunity to review and comment. The only comment from the select board was to meet with the IAC and make certain the employees were okay. So with the exception of having added in the blank space for the name, the, the moniker, the North Central Mass, Kevin, what is the North Central Mass?
Health Purchase Group.
Health Purchase Group. It is the, the document that council has already reviewed and approved.
I, I got a question. I, I wasn't involved, and obviously I'm not privy to any of that information because I don't have that. So I don't know, Jim, going forward, if we're going to be discussing anything that you guys have discussed prior to me joining the board. I need that paperwork in front of me. I guess, next question I have, so by what I'm just, because I don't know a lot about it, just what I've been hearing, I've sat in a couple of those Zoom meetings that you've had with Kevin. And so if we go forward with this, we won't know what, if at all, we're going to save money, or if all, it's going to cost more money. I, I guess you mentioned that we have to allow them to find out without getting interpersonal about our claim data information. I mean, I would think we'd want at least some kind of a quote so we know where we're going. Because I, myself and my corporation, when my insurance comes up, I tell them, look, I need to get a quote. Give me my choices I have, and let me figure out which way I want to go. And I don't see, or and I haven't heard, that there's any, any numbers to be had other than let's move forward. And in my opinion, I don't think that's the right way to go.
I think that's a great point, Joe, and that's something that I could have done a better job explaining in this introductory comments that I made. The idea behind having a joint purchase agreement is to have a bigger and more attractive group in the marketplace to get quotes. So we have the ability to stay by ourselves and, as we've done in the past couple of years through Kevin, put our group, Town of Townsend employees, out to bid and get quotes. We can still do that if that's what the board would prefer to do. What's being proposed, and you're being asked to consider tonight, is joining with two other communities to have a bigger group that will have a bigger stick in the marketplace to go up and get quotes on our total larger group of employees. Kevin, did I, is there an easier way for me to have said that without?
Yeah, let me, let me, let me offer a couple of comments for you that might be helpful, Joe, particularly since you're new to this and, you know, haven't heard all the briefs in the past. This is an extraordinary opportunity where it, it's a proverbial no-lose situation. We have been talking about putting a group of communities together in your area for actually some couple of years now. And we've had lengthy conversations with all the carriers. Carriers being a industry word for health insurance companies. We already have in hand offers to give you a reduction in the premium that you're currently paying substantially below your current premium with two different carriers, two different health insurance companies, who are prepared to offer those quotes as soon as a RFP, Request for Proposals, is issued on behalf of the three communities. Now, Dunstable and Templeton, your partners, have already signed the agreement. Templeton signed it last Thursday night. Dunstable signed it about an hour ago. So the JPA now exists. It is a actual entity. We know for an absolute fact that when those two communities go out to bid, whether Townsend joins them or not, they are going to receive a negative renewal, meaning the current rates that they pay on July 1, 2021, are going to go down with no change in their benefit structure. Maya, Mass and Local Insurance Association, which currently provides the health insurance to Townsend, and actually to Templeton and Dunstable as well, has announced, as of last Thursday, that the range of your renewal will be at best a negative .6, and at worst, a positive 6.8, with an average of positive 2.9. Now, don't try to do the math to get back to that, how do you get from .6 to 6.8 to 2.9? Because they don't do it as an actual average. It's a composite. But in any event, where exactly you will fall on that spectrum, we do not yet know. But what we do know is the best you're going to get is .6, and the worst you're going to get is 6.8. With the joint purchase arrangement, we know that you're going to get a very substantial reduction and offer from at least two carriers for a much, much better quote. Now, how do we know that? Because lacking claims on all three communities, we took your, the only things that the marketplace can quote on is your demographics, your age, basically the census of all your community, of, of all your employees for the three communities. That's age, gender, address those factors. And your plan design, which is your benefit structure, and we gave that to the carriers. And we said, if this group forms, these three communities, what would you do for a quote? And they have given us a hard number. Now, I'm not of liberty to divulge that hard number publicly, because they would be responding with that number pursuant to a formal bid process. What I will tell you is that if two of the communities, Dunstable and Templeton, proceed, and they are both now signatories to the agreement, and they will proceed, they will get a quote which is substantially below the rates they current pay, currently pay, better than what Maya will offer them. And if Townsend is in, then at least one carrier is going to double that negative quote and bring it down twice as low. And the reason, frankly, is exactly what Jim's already told you. The, this is a very unusual time in the health insurance marketplace. The carriers have put a lot of cash in their bottom lines. And the reason for that, as you probably might presume, currently, there are a lot of folks that are not going to hospitals, who frankly are not going to hospitals because they're concerned with COVID exposure. So when rates were set, the rates you pay, the rates everybody else pays for July 1 of this year, July 1, 2020, to June 30, 2021, your fiscal year, those rates were set back in December, January, February, pre-COVID, on an expectation of what claims would be. When COVID really became apparent in March and has been with us ever since, claims have dramatically dropped. The carriers are collecting premiums which did not anticipate that drop. And so they've put a tremendous amount of money into their bottom line. And frankly, they are out there buying business. They're using the cash that they have available to give extraordinary quotes to cities and towns who are out to bid. Now, if it was the case that all 356 cities and towns were out to bid, you might not experience quite the kind of beneficial result that we know you will get if you join this consortium. But all cities and towns are not out to bid. There's a very small number of them that are taking advantage of this situation, and you have this opportunity. So this is an absolute no-lose proposition. Frankly, what we hope is that with a couple of very, very aggressive quotes in hand from a couple of carriers other than Maya, that Maya will respond. Now, remember, this is an RFP. It's not subject strictly speaking to the provisions of 30B, the mass procurement law. So we are free to issue the RFP, get the results, and then begin to negotiate and try to bring the rates down even further. So if a couple of companies provide very, very aggressive quotes, and again, they will, I guarantee it, we already have the quotes in hand, then we're able to go to Maya and we're able to say, look, we've got these great quotes. Are you willing to come down on your quote even more than you've offered, whatever that offer will be, allowing you to retain your current carrier and make not even a change in the carrier? As Jim has said, there's not going to be any change in the benefit structure, but there could be a change in the insurance company. Question?
Yeah, I thought we had talked about this before. The first year, they would retain the current carrier. It would be for the second and beyond where their carrier would, would change. So it's what, Blue Cross Blue Shield right now? So what you just said is that they may not be retaining the carrier for the first.
Well, happily, the choice is going to be yours. Because if, let's say, for instance, Harvard Pilgrim offers you a negative seven, and Maya offers you a plus three, Maya is Blue Cross, Harvard Pilgrim is Harvard Pilgrim, then it's your choice. You can take the better deal, or you can pay more and stay with Blue Cross slash Maya. It's going to be your choice. There's nobody binding you to anything.
That's not the way I understood it. I thought it was given that the first year they would retain who they had.
No, because if you simply tell Maya that you are going to stay with them and you don't competitively procure your health insurance, then the chances are very good. And you wait till next year to do a competitive bid, the chances are very good. You will miss this opportunity because we don't know what you're going to get from quotes 18 months from now. Nobody knows that. What we do know is that you're going to get very aggressive quotes right now from at least two carriers, which you can then use to negotiate with Maya. Now, if at the final point, when Maya has given you their best quote, you've got the best quote from the other carriers, it's going to be entirely up to you what to decide. But as it stands right now with what Maya has said, and what we know you're going to get for a quote, you're looking at $150,000 savings potentially to Townsend and roughly 25% of that for your employees because of the kinds of swing in these quotes that you might get. But that's going to be your choice. So I can't tell you which company will submit the best quotes. I can't tell you what Maya will do in response to those quotes. What I can tell you is that you're going to be in a very, very nice position, proverbially in the driver's seat, to make these choices. And that will only be two or three weeks from now. It's going to come very quickly.
Mr. Chairman, on, on that point, Veronica, you are correct that our discussion has been, for the town of Townsend, that year one will remain Blue Cross. And the expectation is that going out to bid will provide Townsend the opportunity to consider, whether it's a Harvard Pilgrim, or Fallon, or Partners, or any of the others. And as Kevin just said, then that leverages our discussions with Maya. So we are, we are out in the marketplace, and then that leverages Maya to.
I understand what you're saying. It's not the way I understood that this was going to work for the first year. And I, my question then is, can Townsend decide to do a different carrier from the other two towns?
Absolutely.
Must we all do the same carrier?
Yes, you can make that choice. You can be in the JPA, and, and Templeton and Dunstable could say, we're going to take an offer from Fallon, and we're going to drop our rates 7%. And Townsend could say, we're going to stay with Maya Blue Cross, and we're going to pay 2% or 3%, 2% or 3% increase. That's entirely up to you. However, the choice will be yours if you'd like to take advantage of a lower rate with someone else. That'll be up to you.
Okay. It's not the way I understood it after December's discussion. It's different. I understand what you're saying, but it is.
It will be staying, staying with Maya, with Blue, for, at a minimum, year one, if not longer, but a minimum year one. And that's what's been conveyed to the IAC as well, that this is an opportunity to be part of a bigger group, to bid the group, and then leverage for us to leverage where we currently are. We're expecting a positive number from Maya if we stay alone. The hope is we will see probably still a positive number, but a smaller positive number, having leveraged being part of the JPA. But staying with Maya Blue Cross, same plan design for year one.
We can tell you categorically that if you bid alone and you do not join the JPA, you will get a higher rate. Absolutely, positively, without a doubt. Because you're, you're competitively procuring your insurance, Maya will sharpen its pencil, and they will come in with a much lower rate than they would do if you were not in the consortium and you were not bidding. Axiomatically guaranteed. We've done this many, 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 many times. Maya, frankly, does not want to lose your business. They are going to bid much more aggressively to retain your business. And remember, Dunstable, Templeton, Townsend are all Maya clients right now. Maya does not want to lose you. So in order to keep your business, they are going to offer you a much better deal than they would offer you absent the formation of the JPA, the competitive RFP, and the knowledge that they could lose you if they don't aggressively bid. We expect they're going to come on very strong, they're going to offer you a great rate, competitive rate, and you're going to be very happy to stay with Maya Blue Cross. And then next year, when you're over 100 subscribers, and we can actually get claims data on you for the first time, because now the group of three will be about 180 members, then we can go back out to the marketplace, and then you'll have even better choices because we'll be able to get claims data on you. So the expectation is that you'll remain as a group with Maya for this year, and that is, in fact, what we believe is going to happen.
Question. So I, I guess, reading this vote for a joint purchase agreement, by what I'm hearing from you, correct me if I'm wrong, that if we vote for this, you're going to go out and just going to bring back pricing for us to make our decision. Is that correct? So we're not voting on locking ourselves into anything, are we?
The quotes come back to the joint purchase arrangement, and then the communities make their individual decision what it is you want to do. If, so yes, the choice will come back to you. Yes.
So we're not locked into anything solid? So if we, you come back, Kevin, and the numbers just don't seem to work for us? Or it's, it's so minute that why go through all the trouble of changing insurance companies? Why have all the employees?
Yes, indeed.
Have the choice to just say, okay, let's just leave things alone? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, that's absolutely the case. It would make me happy as a consultant if I come back to you in, in three weeks, and I say to you, hey, look, we got one company that wants to cut your rate 12%, and Maya wants to cut your rate 4%. Do you want to take advantage of that incredible reduction and change carriers? Or do you want to stay with Meyer at a very good rate, but not as good? I would love to give you that choice. I don't think that's going to happen. What I think is going to happen is you're going to get that very good rate from one or two carriers, and Maya's going to get probably not quite as good, frankly, but they're going to get a lot closer to it than they would if you're not in the JPA.
Yeah, and just my opinion on this, in Veronica and Joe, a lot of the budget discussions we kind of have started already, we're going to have to find some money somewhere. And this is a, if it is indeed $150,000, that, that's, that's a huge number towards what we want to do.
Well, if, if what he is telling us, I don't know where Veronica stands, but for me, I, I would move forward. But I don't want to say I'm locked into anything until I see numbers. And if we can save money, and the employees have the same benefit and they're saving money, that's where we need to go nowadays.
Chair, if I could put my FinCom hat on for a second and answer a question?
Sure, go ahead, Steve.
So there was something that, is it Mr. Pecos? I'm not sure if I got your name correct.
Yes, you have it, Steve. Thanks.
Yeah, so, you know, this year, obviously, you know, with the insurance carriers, Yeah. So, you know, this year, obviously, you know, with the insurance carriers having a lot of money to the bottom line because of not many claims going in, to your point, people not going into hospitals because of COVID. What's going to happen next year when this comes up to bid, God rolling that, you know, COVID's somewhat behind us, and people start going to the doctors again, the insurance companies' bottom lines are not as sweet as they are this year. What happens a year from now that, yeah, we could take $150,000 savings upfront, which is great, because we need the money, but are we going to end up having to give this all back, because rates are going to go up next year? Would it be beneficial to us to stay as a group, because we can get more competitive rate? Or will we lose out where we may be able to get a competitive rate on our own? And I'm talking next year.
Sure, absolutely. So, a couple of things. First of all, let's be absolutely clear. It is axiomatic. You cannot get as good a rate as a single community, if Townsend stays on its own, as you can if you join a group with the same characteristics characteristics as yours with respect to demographics, census, et cetera. And we've already done all that work and presented the town with all that data a couple of months ago. So, you cannot do better on your own. That's that's absolutely a guarantee. It's impossible. That's first point. Second point, what you're referring to is something called the COVID load. All of the underwriters, all of the actuaries, and my company, NFP, has its own actuaries in Texas. Blue Cross has their own, Harvard Pilgrim has their own, Aetna, Cigna, everybody's got them. They're all doing your calculations. Blue Cross is saying that the COVID load is 7%. So, Blue Cross is saying, on July 1, 2022, whatever your rate would otherwise be, plan on it increasing 7% in addition to that. Harvard Pilgrim is planning a 2% load. Fallon is is planning a 2% load. I could go on and on with what all the carriers are are planning. The point is, no one knows for sure exactly what claims are going to do, presuming COVID becomes, relatively speaking, a thing of the past come this fall, let's say. What we and some carriers, some of the carriers, some of the underwriters are saying that when you take all of the COVID medical experience, those claims out of the system, and you replace them with all those elective surgeries and everything else that people are waiting to do, and you put that in the system, that that's not going to cause an increase at all. One is going to take the place of the other. That's all. And it's not going to be this big COVID load. I don't frankly know who's right. What I will tell you, Steve, is that you will do no better and no worse with respect to the COVID load as a single community than you will with the group, with the JPA. What I will tell you is that irrespective of whatever the COVID load is, you will do better as a member of a consortium than you will do on your own. That's absolute.
And that was more my question, because, you know, it's great to have short term, but I kind of look at the long term, and long term as a group, if we can save money long term, go going in with these other towns, then that makes more sense. I just want to make sure that, you know, from a finance standpoint, that this is just not going to be a short term win, which, again, everybody's looking for money this year. But then come next year, we're locked into something with two other towns, and come to find out we could have done better on our own. But, you know, I agree with you, and I work for a company that has a lot of employees in it, and when we go out to bid, that it is doesn't make sense that, you know, it's a larger company, we can usually get better offers. So, I'm just looking down, you know, one, two, three years down the road, other than just short term, what's in front of us.
Well, the proof the proof of the pudding, Steve, is pretty simple. Maya has announced their rate range, negative 0.6, plus 6.8. They've already announced it. So, Townsend is going to get a rate within that range. The best rate you're going to get is a negative 0.6, less than a one-point reduction. We already have offers in hand that are much, much, much better than that. When Maya hears that those offers are on the table, Maya's going to have a decision to make, which is if they want to retain your business, they're going to have to do better for you than a negative 0.6, or whatever rate they offer you. And they're probably going to step up to do it, because they don't want to lose your business. So, Steve, I don't need to speculate that you're going to do better. I can guarantee that you're going to do better. Guaranteed. This is an unusual situation we find ourselves in this year. I could not have made you this promise last year or the year before, but I can make you the promise this year. Going forward to next year, you will now, instead of being a single community with less than 100 subscribers, you'll be with two other communities, and cumulatively, you'll be around 180 subscribers. That means, because you're over 100, we can get full, detailed, complete claims data, which we don't have right now, and we cannot present your claims data to the marketplace. Once we have your claims data next December, January, we'll be able to present you to the marketplace. And it was a very, very good possibility you could sustain multiple years with negative quotes. In other words, a reduction this year and a reduction again next year. Certainly, I can tell you that next year, being in a consortium with claims information, that will bid you a second time, two years in a row, and you're going to do much, much better than if you stayed alone for two years, really very significantly better.
Okay. Let's let's move this along. Can I get a motion, please?
I still have questions, Wayne. So, sure, we can get a motion. Go ahead.
I'd like to keep. I mean, we're not locked in anything to Joe's point. I think this is, again, I said it in December, I think this is a no-brainer to at least explore. But go ahead and ask a question.
I just got a quick one. Is there a cost factor that the town of Townsend is paying to your corporation, Kevin? Or how are you just a broker, an agent? How is this working?
No, we're already your advisors, and you pay us a fee already, and that's not going to change. So, there's no change to that relationship. Unless, of course, you're not happy with our services, in which case, we encourage you to go out, put out an RFP, and hire someone else.
Okay. Veronica, what was your question?
How many years is this agreement for?
This agreement is has no backend to it, but you are allowed to extricate yourselves from it each and every year. So, any year that you no longer want to be in the consortium, you simply notify them no later than December 31 of the year preceding the July 1, when you would want to withdraw. So, if you want to withdraw on July 1, 2022, you notify the partner communities no later than December 31, 2021, and you are then out of the group.
Why would we join a group of three people, three communities? Why wouldn't we want a group of 10 communities then?
If you can get them, do it.
Okay.
Well, part of that, you don't want to just saddle up with anybody, though, right, Kevin? I mean, because there's...
Well, you don't.
Join with another community that we might know has had a pretty has a pretty bad risk profile. And so, it's not just about growing...
We want to find the healthy communities. Is that what you're saying?
That's absolutely the case. We we refer to it as geographic bias, and it's as simple as this. You're in a consortium right now. You're in a sort of kind of JPA called Maya, the Mass and Local Insurance Association. It's got 100-odd members. Unfortunately for you, the vast majority of the members are inside of 495 and 128, and they get a preponderance of their health care in a Boston setting. You are much further from the flagpole, from the Boston hospitals. And that does not mean that if any of your employees get seriously ill or injured, that they would not go to Boston for their care, for some specialty care. But by and large, health insurance, health care is local. You are your employees get the bulk of their health care in a much less expensive setting, i.e. central mass, than the bulk of the members of Maya. What we know, because we've studied this over and over, is that if you're that far away from Boston, from the nexus of Maya, then the chances are very good the rates you pay are subsidizing those communities that are much closer to Boston, the much larger number. So, what we try to do is match you up with communities that are in your same geographic area, allowing you to take care to take advantage of that lowered cost, i.e. geographic bias. And that's why we're pairing you up with communities right in your area. By the way, when you asked the question, Veronica, I presumed you meant if you could get 10 towns in your area, I would say absolutely do it. Now, I will tell you right now that come the summer in the fall of this year, you're going to have communities petition to join you. They're already calling us. They're already calling Jim. They're already calling the other two communities, and they're...
They're calling Jim?
They're calling all of the managers and us, and they're already expressing an interest in if you form this and go forward, would you be interested in allowing us to be looked at for potential membership this summer and this fall? We can pretty much guarantee that others are going to want to join with you because of the the activity and the interest that we're already hearing. The nice thing is, you'll be able to be very, very selective, and only allow regional school districts or towns to join you who have a superior health risk profile, i.e. good claims. And so, yes, when you said earlier, do we look for the healthy members? You betcha. That's exactly what we look for, because they'll make your rates better, and others won't.
Okay. Anything else?
I'm good.
Okay. Can I get a motion, please?
I guess we want to make a motion to vote to joint purchase agreement reference health insurance.
And if I could just ask, Joe, that you have subject to council's satisfaction regarding Chapter 32B, Section 12. That's just the one thing he asked me to to have as a condition.
Section 12. Okay. And so, vote joint purchase agreement reference health insurance upon council's review 32B, Section 12.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Are those in favor?
I have to think about this a minute.
Okay. I'll vote yes anyway. So, Wayne Miller, yes?
Veronica, yes.
But we're not locked into anything. We're not. That's the way I understand.
You're shopping, Joe. I think that's the best way to look.
I think we're locked in for the while. We're not locked in. We're into this agreement, then, if we sign it, if Adam agrees with Section 32B, blah, blah, blah. Then, I assume that we are in with this group for this year. Am I correct on that?
Yes, that's correct. But let me be honest with you. You're dealing with two neighboring communities that are just like you. If for some reason, everything doesn't happen exactly as we've described it, if you're not sitting here three or four weeks from now, once the RFP process is over, with excellent quotes in hands, for your insurance rates to go down, if that's not the case, and you want to leave the group, even though you're technically bound, I can tell you that those other two communities are not going to require you to stay if that's not what you want to do. They'll allow you to leave, because they don't frankly want you to be part of this if you're not a willing participant. But I predict for you that you're going to be very, very pleased in a few weeks, and you're going to be very, very happy that you're part of this group, when you see what the rates will be that you can get, and what the savings is. And by the way, on that Section 12 question, right now, in the state of Massachusetts, about 75% of the cities and towns are in JPAs. They're all around you. We manage about seven or eight of them. In the history of JPAs, there has never been a single town meeting vote, not one. So, we and in Section 12, there is no discussion whatsoever about the need to go to a town meeting. And in point of fact, the governing body that has always decided for communities to join a JPA or not is the chief elected officials, the board of selectmen, city council, et cetera. So, I know town council has to research that, but I can tell you, from having been doing this now for coming up on 20 years, having formed seven or eight of these, and having worked with probably well over 100 communities, not one has ever had a town meeting vote. There's nothing in the statute requiring...
We'll see what Adam says.
We'll see what Adam has. Thank you very much for your time tonight.
I understand. Just one cautionary note, we do need to move on this. So, we're going to need to know what your town council says, and have your signatures on the document no later than probably today's Wednesday. I would say end of the week, maybe Monday next week. But Dunstable and Townsend are anxious to put the bid out, and they'll give you a few more days, I'm sure, because they would love to have your participation. But they're not going to wait two weeks. I can tell you that.
Council is prepared to turn it around quickly, and the fact that we are part of Maya, which is a JPA, when you look at how it functions, and
Indeed.
We've been we've been doing that for the better part of a decade. The expectation is we'll be fine.
Good. Okay, thank you. Well, congrats, folks. Nice to chat with you all, and stay well.
Okay, thank you.
You too.
All right. 4.3 Discuss Vote Town Administrative Goals and Objectives for 2021. Veronica, I think this was yours. Do you want to start off?
I think what I would like, yeah, I do have two things. I think that, you know, just looking at timing here and knowing what else we have to do today, I would like to move this to a work session. But I would like to ask that Mr. Kreidler provide us with a list of his accomplishments from 2020, and his goals for 2021, and that he provide that to us, and that Joe, and Wayne, and I look at what our goals would be. And then in a work session, we sit and do that. I assume we're using SMART goals
Yes.
For what the three of us do. Jim, you can just give us a list of your accomplishments and your goals, and we'll translate what we can. Does that work for you, Joe, and Wayne?
Yeah, absolutely. I was just I was going to suggest the same thing, because this is a larger discussion than and we're not even a quarter down the list here.
Joe?
Can we, if we're going to do that, can we also just discuss the 4.51, the selectmen's operating policies and procedures, and kind of roll that into a work session all at once?
Yeah, let's do it all at the same time.
That's a good idea.
That's a really good idea, Joe. Thank you.
That's what I'm saying. Let's not beat that horse. Let's go into one right there. So, we'll set a date that we all can be available. Hopefully, it's not instantly, but we'll make it work.
Sounds good.
And we can put 4.6 in with that as well, the organization chart?
Yep.
Is that too much?
No, that's I'm looking to trim here tonight. So, yes.
So, that's good.
All right.
We'll make we'll talk about a work session. Hopefully, you can do it then after a couple weeks.
Okay.
Should everybody's...
Is that fair, Jim, to you?
Perfect. Yep.
Okay. All right. 4.4, 4.4.1, Shared Winter Streets and Spaces Grant Continued Public Engagement. This is yours, Veronica?
It is. Can I share my screen? Is it possible to do that?
Yep. Let's see here. What number are we on?
4.4.
4.4.
Okay, all right. You should be showing as a co-host, which will authorize you to share, Veronica.
I am. Okay. And I want to say that I see that Emmy is on the call, so I might be asking her to speak as well, if that is okay. Can everybody see a map of Townsend?
Yep.
Titled Winter Shared Streets and Spaces. All right. This is the grant that a group of us has been working on. And our goal here is wayfinding, including bike lanes, so wayfinding for signage, bike lanes, bike racks, sidewalk repair, bike repair station, and a few other amenities. This is due into the state. It's a Mass DOT grant, and it's due in by February 26. We have a we contacted the Bar Foundation. It partners with MassDOT, and has provided us with a planner. Our planner is Margaret Kent from Kittleson and Associates. We met with her last week. She's wonderful. And the meeting was recorded, so you can watch that on the town's YouTube channel if you like. The yellow space on here is the historic district, and that affects signage. Our goal is to get people out to parks. So, if you go up Howard Street, you can get to Howard Park. If you go up Brookline, you can get in at the police station to Howard Park up here. You can access from the center of town, either walking or biking, Old Meeting House Park, and that's what these Qs and Ts are. And Jeff Street parking down here gives you access to the Adams-Stam area. And all of these bring you to the bike trail. The current bike trail is ending right here at Depot Street. So, what we want are bike lanes... So what we want are bike lanes that take us up Depot Street, up Bow Street, and brings you to parking at the common. And you could go either way on those bike lanes. We're doing contraflow bike lanes on one-way streets, which is what Depot and Bow are. And then that gets you into parking here. To get to Howard Park, bike lane or walking up School Street to Water and then up the sidewalk to get into at Hawthorne Brook. And also that bike lane would come down here to one nineteen, bring you to Riverbank Terrace and over to this parking lot. And then again, down Jeff Street, contraflow parking to get to the bike trail here. We had wanted to put in crosswalks here and here and here. But what we've learned is that it's difficult to get a crosswalk in unless you have a flow study. And there are no flow studies for these areas. So that is something that we can request for, with either the UPWP grant for the future and find another grant farther on to allow us to put in those crosswalks. So we will have signage. This is a railroad sign, this X. The X over here is a railroad sign. These are at the islands that are on those two streets. And then we'll have trail signage, the Qs are QR codes. So you can just put your phone up and get the trail map. This is signage up by the police station and at the school QR code. And same up here at Old Meeting House Road and farther up where the other entrance up near Wallace Hill is for Old Meeting House Park with QR codes for mapping. We want to put signs on the common, but we, we have to abide by the historic district constraints. So we are investigating what is possible for the signs around the common. We want to make Jeff's, Riverbank Terrace and Jeff Street one-way from the entrance into Town Hall coming down this way. That would make it safer and would allow for bike traffic and walking traffic for that matter. Bike racks here and perhaps if we're allowed at the common, a bikes, a bike repair station. We would like it behind the rec center so then the kids could learn to repair bikes. And we could also have a camera from Town Hall trained on it for vandalism purposes. Not that we expect vandals here in Townsend, but you never know. If we can't do that because of the historic district constraints, we will have to consider moving it elsewhere. So with that said, Emmy, is there anything that I forgot?
Nothing that you forgot. No, hold on. Here we go. Nothing that you forgot. Can you guys hear me? Okay. No, Veronica, you encapsulated it beautifully. You know, I just wanted to expand on that goal a little, especially if nobody was at the last meeting when we sort of talked about this grant. You know, Townsend has an incredible amount of outdoor assets to, to bring to the table. And they've been, our usability as a town to get to them has been pretty neglected. So the idea behind a lot of the grants that we're going to be bringing forward is to really help pull our community together outside and reinforce the amazing conservation land that we have, the beautiful trails that we have, our, the businesses at our town common, all by driving traffic as walkers, bikers, runners, to give us a, a more user-friendly town, I guess is the best way to say it. And Veronica's worked really, really hard to work on the maps and get them put together for all of us on the, on the team. And we've got a couple of little hiccups we're dealing with right now. But I think we're going to bring something really amazing to the town. And if we can get this, that would be fantastic. And if not, we have a bunch of other grants in the queue that we will keep plugging away at until we get where we need to go. So we appreciate any support that you guys can give us or any thoughts that you might have that we can bring them into the table as well.
So what do you need for tonight, Joe, Veronica?
I guess, I guess the, a sign off on the concept is, is what we would like. Next meeting is, I'm going to unshare my screen here for just a second. And I'll see if I can get this map up on a, I'm not, you know, social media perfect, but I'll see if we can't get this map and the abstract after our meeting Thursday up on some town websites or Facebook pages for some feedback. But in any event, I think what we would like to have is know that we have town support to do this. This is funding that is CARES Act funding, and it's Massachusetts chose to put money towards getting towns outside, walking and using the open space that they have. So we will need buy-in from, we would, whatever we put forward, the amount that we put at, you are, if we are, you know, awarded the grant, we would get that, the funds on March twenty-sixth, and then it's a quick two-month build. So we need the town's support from all the players in all the departments to know that we can actually do this, that we're ready to go. We can't expend any money until we're given the award. So we would need to know that all the, you know, vendors for signs and striping of roads, we're going to repaint the existing crosswalks since we can't get new crosswalks in place. So we'll just repaint, drive around town and look at the sad state of our crosswalks. They really do need repainted, so it would be nice to have that. So anyway, what we're looking forward is, looking for from the board of selectmen, I think is a vote saying that we are behind this, that we will encourage all the departments to be behind this as well. And we should have a pretty final product on the sixteenth to bring forward.
So Joe, can I, Joe, can I get a motion to the board of selectmen approve the initial concept for shared winner streets and space grant?
I make a motion that the board of selectmen approve the shared streets grant.
No, to approve the concept.
Approve the concept of the shared streets grant.
Veronica Cal, second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Joe Shank, aye.
I assume you're a yes, Veronica?
I am.
Well, you need to say it.
Veronica Cal, yes. I thought I did. I must have had a hiccup here.
Wayne Miller, yes. Okay, thanks for, thanks, Emmy.
That's a great presentation.
Before we move on from that, Veronica, for the public participation component of this, is there, do you think, asking if there's anyone on the call that has any questions or comments about it? Just so we can take notes of some public participation here?
That would be great. Wayne?
I would, I would actually have that as a separate meeting for Veronica that you and Emmy could host. Doesn't mean to be a board of selectman meeting.
We, we could do that.
I would, I know, I think you'd get more feedback from it than.
And I have a question, Jim. I know I sent this to you. You probably haven't had a chance to respond. How do we make a street one-way in town? That was something that we wanted to know. Can we hang signs on the existing signage? Those are things that we need answers to pretty quickly because it's a short timeframe on the grant.
The simple answer is you, the board of selectmen. You are the road commissioners statutorily. So you control whether you put a no parking from here to the corner or whether you make a street one-way or two ways. So you would seek input from highway and police and fire. Ultimately, it's your decision as a board.
Okay. All right. All right, great. Thank you.
Okay. Four point eight, declare surplus of the following with a value be determined by the chief procurement officer and water superintendent. Joe, just as, since there's so many things on here, I would just make a motion to declare surplus as listed.
I make a motion that we declare surplus for the items listed on the agenda.
Is that good enough, Jim?
Perfect.
Okay, can I get a second?
Veronica Cal, second.
Any discussion or questions?
Are, are we doing all four, is that, is that, does that motion cover four point eight, four point nine, and four point ten?
Nope, just, just eight. We'll do nine and ten separately.
Okay.
I'm just doing department by department, I guess.
Oh, all right. This one is for the water department, correct?
Yep, it's a bunch of junk. For lack of a better term. All those in favor?
Veronica, yes.
Joe Shank, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes. Four point nine, declare surplus of an old police radar trailer. Can I get a motion there?
I declare surplus on an old police radar trailer with the value determined by the chief procurement officer and the police chief.
Second.
All those in favor?
Veronica Cal, yes.
Joe Shank, aye, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes. Four ten. That was all the procurements, I believe, or the surplus.
Right.
Okay. Four ten, review discuss changes to permit fees from the plumbing electrical building and driveways submitted by the building commissioner. I got a pretty substantial listing from that. So Jimmy, I don't know if he's.
Eric is here, yep.
Okay, Eric, if you want to just go over this real quick?
Yeah, I could surmise it pretty quickly, considering that, that the former motions there. So Plumbing Inspector Richard Caperness has identified that there's a shortfall in our inspections. He's already made the change out in Ashby where he's also an inspector. And I guess he's found that no one is inspecting these LP regulators. The fire department inspects the tanks, which is the storage. And he inspects the piping, which is after the regulator. But the person who installs the LP provider does the regulator. And I guess he's found some problems with that and wants to inspect them. And in order to inspect them, he has to create a fee for it. And he's already done that in Ashby, so it's causing some trouble with these providers like Lorden and these other ones that we overlap with. And he's, to be consistent, and also as a revenue and, and in the name of safety, he wants to propose a new fee and a new permit because the piping can't be inspected on the plumber's permit because it's not the plumber's work. So he would like to add a fee to the, his schedule for LP gas regulators.
And the rest of it's just your recommendation, the other ones?
That, that's the first one. The second one is that the inspector of wires wanted to make a change to his commercial work, which will be in benefit to some people who are doing smaller work. It actually saved them some money instead of having to pay two hundred and seventy-five dollars as a minimum now. If you're doing a small amount of work, under a thousand dollars, it'd be seventy-five dollars. If you're doing a little bit more than that, if it's over a thousand dollars worth of work, but less than five thousand, it'd be a hundred and fifty. And then after that, it would be what it is now, two seventy-five. So that would actually benefit some of the contractors, save them a couple bucks. It'd be a lot easier if you just wanted to add in an outlet or two. So that's one of the other changes we're proposing. The next one on it would be, we're going to go into the building department. So the building department fees, I'd like to do a more substantial overview of them, considering our budget, which I, I sent this to you guys before I knew about our budget-related issues that we were going to go over today, but the office was closed. But I want to change a couple of fees there. So some of our fees are pretty low. We have some fees that come in at, at twenty dollars, some maybe even less than that. So I want to establish a minimum fee of fifty dollars, which is pretty consistent with what other towns are charging. A twenty-dollar fee really doesn't cover the time it takes me to go out there and do any inspections. So I feel like we're losing money on that. And it also causes other people to pay more for permits and get less service. So they're paying for something that somebody else is getting the benefit for. So I would like to propose a minimum fee of fifty dollars is established for building permits. On the next one on my list would be that reprinting permits is a substantial heartache to our building department. And I want to propose a fee of twenty-five dollars as more of a nuisance to the contractor to not lose their permit cards. Pepperell charges quite a bit for that. I looked up what they charge, and it's quite a bit. And some communities don't charge for it. But given that we don't have any kind of electronic system of keeping track of this stuff, when someone loses a permit card, it, it's a real problem. It, it can cause some real difficulties. So as a deterrent to them, I'd like to propose adding a fee of twenty-five dollars for reprinting permit cards. It does cost us money to do that, you know, and there's no, there's no penalties for it right now. So people can lose a card and say, well, I lost the card. What am I supposed to do in that aspect? The next one on the list would be insulation as a whole. Right now, I believe we're charging them based on job cost, which isn't entirely accurate and can be easily manipulated by them. So my, my clerk identified that we should be charging a fifty-dollar fee for, for insulation. We're getting a lot of insulation permits. I don't have the numbers in front of me because I was going to be at the office tonight. But we get quite a few of these, and it would generate quite a bit of revenue to have a consistent fee of fifty dollars. And it may even save them some money if they're doing a substantial insulation job. But at, at most, it's just going to be a lot more consistent with other towns and similar to what the minimum fee would be already. After that, we get into a more complicated issue of our real bread and butter for the building department, which is the fees we charge based on square foot for renovations, new additions, new dwellings, decks, porches. So these fees are established by former Commissioner Hanks. It's based on the ICC method of charging fees. It's not one of the more popular methods, but it's definitely one of the more safe methods. Most communities go with a job cost fee. That way, when the job cost goes up, the fee goes up. But again, the numbers can be manipulated. So ours are based on square foot. Ours are based on the two thousand nine numbers. So they're very outdated. To bring them up to current numbers would be an increase of roughly twenty to twenty-five percent, depending on what that is, which sounds like a lot at first, but when you realize it hasn't been done in eleven years, it's really only two percent per year. And we really should be evaluating these fees on a yearly basis. But I wasn't here, so I guess it wasn't done. But in either case, I think we're losing money on that. You know, I, I do think we're losing money on that. The cost of new homes has gone up. Therefore, I think the permit fees go up consummate with that adjustment. I do think that those fees are low. So I propose that we change them from the two thousand nine numbers to what the ICC is currently charging or, you know, it's based on average construction cost. So ICC is saying that the average construction cost is this now, and it's obviously gone up since two thousand nine. And after that was just the change to the driveway permit fee, which again is a twenty-five-dollar fee. It's kind of low. At, at minimum, me and Jim Smith, the highway superintendent, we look at driveways. If the two of us look at it, it costs at least twenty-five dollars. If I have to send it out to conservation or to any other department to take a look at this, if it's more complicated, if we see wetlands, now you're sending Dave Henkel out there or someone else. If we send three or four people out to look at one driveway, twenty-five dollars is not covering it. And in most cases, that's for new construction, but it also covers entrances onto just land and stuff like that. We do do driveways that are not new construction. It does happen. But I do think that twenty-five dollars barely covers our operating expense, so that needs to come up. And we, between me and Jim, we think forty dollars is a fair number. And also, I would like to change it because right now, shared driveways cost X for up to three. If we do it forty per driveway, it would be fairer. Whereas you're just paying for the second driveway, you're not paying for that third driveway. So forty per, per access is what we propose. And that's it in a nutshell.
All right, thank you, Eric. Anybody have any questions for Eric?
I have two. So am I right in, from what you said, we last updated fees in two thousand nine? Is that correct?
As far as I know, for these, those fees, it looks like it, on our fee schedule now, it says there was a change in two thousand fifteen. But from what I'm understanding from Janet, that that change was for solar. Anything to do with the, these, these fees.
Okay. And then the other thing is just from something you said about the, the permitting, the, the document inspections, if they lose those cards, do you know whether or not other inspections have happened?
So thankfully, Richie, Mr. Capeness, and also Mr. Cushing are very good at keeping records. So we can look that stuff up, but it is problematic. Those guys keep almost a double check of records. They keep one on their person and they keep one at the office, and it's all done by hand. And we can't change that unless we go to a way better permitting system. And I would love to do that, but it's a completely different discussion for a different night that I'm not prepared for tonight and would be, would be a substantial cost to the town. And given what we're doing with the budget right now because of COVID, I, I just don't think that's appropriate to cover right now. Right now, we're doing it by hand. It's the way we've always done it. And yeah, when they lose that card, it can be problematic because when I go there, I need to see those sign-offs. They could make. Because when I go there, I need to see those sign offs. Um, they could make notes on the cards. You know, um, sometimes you allow someone to move forward on one section, but not another and say, yeah, I inspected that part, but not this part. And when they lose the card, it, it causes a lot of chaos. And some people need these cards for their 203K loans that they're doing, if they're investors. Um, there's, there's multiple scenarios, but yeah, it causes a hardship to us. And it definitely costs us money to reprint the cards, our staff having to double track. I just feel like as a deterrent, if we charged you $25, you'd do it a lot less. How about that?
So I think that we need an entire in the town, and I think this is something we should be looking at for futures, an electronic system for, um, the permitting system, whether it's in the planning department or the building department, uh, land use, conservation. Um, I think we need to look at getting our records online. I think that the guys that are inspecting out in the field, they could have iPads or some sort of electronic device that they could just punch it in and there it is and they can call it up.
I would love that.
Looking at this.
I worked before in Pittsburgh. They moved to an online permitting system like that. We had tablets and such. And I've already met with a couple of different, um, software designers that provide those types of services. Um, but again, it, the cost is based on how you're going to integrate and all this other stuff. But I would, I would love to move towards that. But like I said, it's a bigger conversation for a bigger day. And it would, it would definitely parlay into the single point of collection and some other things that you, uh, have spoken about in prior meetings. So I, I would definitely like to do that on another day.
Well, definitely, but I think we should be thinking about that as a town.
Absolutely.
That's where we should be going and we should be looking for funding for those sorts of things.
It is the future. And I was hoping that another rounds of CARES money would come around and maybe I could, uh, write a well worded letter that could get us some of that action. But, uh, I missed the, I missed the deadline for it, um, being new and all. But, uh, yeah, I would love to do that eventually. Absolutely.
Sounds like a perfect project for a new, uh, treasure collector.
Sure does.
Does it not?
Can I just make a simple suggestion, Wayne?
Sure.
Thanks. What, you know, that you probably, um, Eric, you guys are probably already doing this, but when I go to the airport now, I turn around, I take a photograph of where I parked my car on my phone.
Yeah.
If you guys just all routinely, whenever you left a permit, take a picture of it, at least you'll have it, you know, for now.
Yeah, it's a, it's a good way to keep track of it for sure. I mean, that, that's a great suggestion. Um, Richie's a little older. Uh, he's not too good with the technology. He's really good at what he does though. And he's, uh, he's a little stubborn, but I, if I could get him to do it, I will. But, um, he's, he was really hot to trot to do his change for that LP gas. He thinks it's unsafe. And because I had to go before you guys for that change, I said, well, let's try to hit a couple of other high points. So I don't waste everybody's time. I'll do it all at once. And I may do it again shortly in the future, um, based on, um, our budget.
Okay. Thanks. Um, Joe, do you have anything?
No, I'm good. I, I, you know, I thank you for the input and what Richie and yourself as a, as houses in town here and, uh, great point. Plumbing's done. Tanks in the ground done, but the fire department, no one's inspecting the regulators had that conversation many a times. So that's the safe thing for our community and move forward with what you're doing. I don't think it's unfair what you're asking for.
Yeah. I mean, if something went wrong, they'd say, well, who's looking at this? And Richie's saying, nobody. Other communities do it, uh, automatically in some cases, um, in Pittsburgh, they just do it, but they have way less LP than us. Um, because they have natural gas, they don't let conflicting gases go on the same properties. So they do it as a, as a courtesy, but, um, really it should be the, uh, the LP people who are, who are taking care of that stuff and being held accountable. It'd be another permit form and they might complain a little bit. There'll be a little bit of pushback, but at the end of the day, it's, it's safer.
I agree.
Yep. Thanks. Um, can I get a motion to approve the changes?
So do we want to read it just how it says, approve changes to the permit fees for plumbing, electrical, building and driveways as submitted by the building commissioner?
Perfect.
Veronica Kell, second?
All those in favor?
Veronica Kell, yes?
Joe Shank, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes. Thank you, Eric. Appreciate it.
Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
All right. Now, four seven, we're going, taken out of order. We move this one down. Uh, discuss the draft decision tree for the citizens in need. Veronica and Jim were sketching on a pad the other night.
And it is still sketched. I just used a template instead of freehand. Um, I figured we should look at this and talk about it and decide what we want to do. So that is the first thing that I want to look at. So 4.7 was discuss the draft decision tree. Um, one thing that I noted in the senior center newsletter, they also mentioned fuel and housing assistance. And so we need to, um, roll things into one with that. So I, I don't have that in front of me at the moment. But if you could all look at that, I think that's something we have to discuss. Joan?
Ronnie, I've got it. It's, um, it's the New England Farm Workers Council will help with heating bills. So that's another excellent reference for folks to have. So we, yeah, we should consolidate all this and make sure it's on at least the front page of the, uh, town website.
So Joan, if you could send that to me?
Yes.
And then I'll, I don't mind making this officially, you know, a doc doc or whatever. But I, I just want to get it done, you know, figured out how we're doing it. So
Yes.
If you look at this, um, we need someone, so advertising first, although that might be a second. I looked at all these, um, that's maybe 4.12. So we'll come back to advertising that's at the top. But when the call comes in, it's coming into the office of the selectman.
So what document is that? Cause I don't see no chat.
No, we don't have one, Joe.
Didn't I, I sent that to you, Jim? You didn't send it out?
I did not, no.
No.
I didn't send it to everybody. I didn't want to break open meeting laws.
Did you have the, you have the ability to share? Do you have the ability to share?
If you want to pull it up on your screen, feel free.
Let me see if I can find.
Otherwise I can. I need to pop in a thumb drive if I'm going to do that.
Try to find it.
I have, I, I have it and I know where it is. Um, I just have to.
I just commented on how pretty it was compared to mine.
I know. Um, okay. Do you want me to pull it up or?
Uh, if you can easily, I've got a copy here, but I've got it on my desktop and I'm zooming on my laptop.
Okay, hang on. Um, give me one second. I think I called it decision tree. All right. Can I still share? Oh, it's crooked. It's sideways, you guys. Um, how do I rotate?
View. Is it a PDF?
Yes, uh, yes.
View up top. Should be a rotate button and a dropdown.
Rotate view, got it. Okay.
Modern technology.
There we go.
What I do all day, Joe?
Thank you. Okay. So let me, um, let me get back to the zoom and I'll share my screen. Thank you, Wayne. I've just learned something. That's good. Okay. Um, so share. All right. So this is it. So when, um, I'm going to start here, this is for four point, whatever it is. Call comes into the office of the selectman. And, um, Jim, I just want to say, let's check how the phone system works because as of, I guess whenever I wrote this Saturday, um, it was still, if you knew your name or you knew Carolyn's name, you could get to your, um, voicemail. If you go in and you have to listen to the first set of one through nine, and then you get to the second set of one through nine to hit the one for the selectman's office in the second set of one through nine. If in fact, there's no one there to pick up, it does not go to the voicemail. It goes, it, it rings for, I can tell you now, seven rings. And then it pops you back to the, you know, the message, if one for this office, the town clerk, two for, you know, the assessors, three, four. And it can make you a little bit crazy and it doesn't matter whether I'm calling from my cell phone or my landline.
I agree.
Um, that needs to be fixed. Otherwise having calls come into the office of the selectman is a waste of time. You know, people will just get frustrated and they're the people that need help and off they go. And, um, the town is.
Yep. Also made a follow up ticket to Guardian on that. I know that they, they have it on their list, so I'll refresh that one.
Make it faster. Okay. So then, um, whoever takes the call, is it housing or fuel? If it's no, then you're sent to the worthy trust. And this over here, if it's not housing or fuel, transfer to the Abram French Committee and the worthy trust, the trust fund policy that we have. Joe, if you haven't seen that one, I think it's under trust policy perhaps that it's called. Uh, so look at that. It's a committee of three, one selectman, whoever draws the straw. We talked about this the other day. So i- if it's not housing or fuel, it goes to worthy trust. If it is housing or fuel, and I debated on how to do this, oops. If it's fuel only, then it goes to CDVG and we need to talk about that process. All right. For the fuel assistance, because there's what, 26,000 of fuel assistance available to the town through the CDVG grant that has to be spent by April 1st of this year, or we, the town, lose it. Because none of those monies have been distributed.
April 30th, Ronnie.
April 30th, okay. So the fuel should be going first to this, to spend those funds. Because it's a federal grant and I know from grant work that I've done in my aged past that it is not a good thing to return money to, on a federal grant. You do, you are not viewed favorably. Maybe other people have had different experiences, but the, the rule of thumb is never return federal money that you received for a grant. Make sure you use it for the purpose that it is intended. So please, please, if you need fuel assistance, there are income requirements for that.
And I think them electronic signs, first and foremost, get positioned and word it how we have to. That will be huge.
I agree with Joe to get those lighted signs up and say, fuel assistance, call. And whatever the number is on our list is how you apply for this. So we need to do that. If it's fuel only, it goes directly to CDVG. If it's not fuel only, well, is it housing only? So, um, housing only, if it's yes, it goes to CMHA for the COVID funds that we have. If it is not housing only, it's both. So you go to CDVG and you get referred to CMHA. And it's the board of selectmen's office. Well, go ahead, Joan. I see your hand.
Oh, I'm sorry. I think we should, we should, uh, change the verbiage, fuel and or heating bills.
Um, okay.
Farmers, the New England farm workers will do, will do heating, heating bills, like, you know, if you have electric heat or something.
Um, when we say fuel, we'll, we're talking gas, oil, propane, correct?
Yep.
Okay. So everything except the electric.
Well, maybe even electric. I, I have to fine tune my understanding on that one.
Okay. I don't have the New England farm workers in this thingy. So send me the information and I'll see how I can get it in.
Okay.
Because if it's electric heat, so I'd have to put another diamond, fuel or heating bills, another diamond. Fuel or heating, you know, fuel or electric. So, um, send me that.
Yep.
Uh, so anyway, that's it. And then I was trying to think of a way, no matter who it is, we should tell people, do you need fuel, food assistance? And get them to TEO. So, you know, this is what this is for. If it's worthy trust, they take care of whatever the need is, whether it's, you know, um, hos- you know, tra- transportation to the hospital, cleaning help while you're undergoing chemotherapy. If it's anything like that, that they're asking for assistance to, that's worthy trust. But we are, um, assuming that people from the worthy trust, that group of three will say, well, if you also need food assistance, we'll get you the TEO. Otherwise, all done. I thought that after the fuel transfer, the call should go to, um, the, uh, housing administrator for the town, paid staff for the town. So right now that would be Jody, but we said we would only, you know, tran- so transfer the call to the housing administrator. And then housing could, you know, suss it out on where to send them.
I think this looks great.
So that's the plan. I need an added diamond in here to add in what the senior center is doing and anything else that the, they had a couple of different numbers in there and I wasn't sure.
I, I'm on it.
Okay.
I've got it tomorrow.
Okay. So you, you just need this to finalize and then we can vote on our next meeting?
Um, I think we should vote now that we will adopt this with the change.
I'd like to see the final.
Oh, you want to see the final? Okay.
Yeah.
All right. You want it pretty too?
I do.
Are we gonna, are we gonna?
I can help you with that actually, so.
Thank you. Go ahead, Joe. Say it again. I can't hear.
Going to, who do we put in charge of dealing with this lighted sign? I think that is first and foremost.
That's another, that's another topic down below, Joe.
Okay. So the decision tree right now, I just need to make sure I've got my, our eyes on things. Jo- Joan is going to send me the information on the, um, triangle that goes there for fuel and anything else from senior center. Okay? And then, um, I will get it perhaps with, uh, get it on a form, perhaps with help from you, uh, Wayne. And we'll.
If you send it, if you send it to Jim, I can, I'll make it nice.
Okay. I will send you my handwritten after I get Jones in and we'll make it nice. Or do you want me to type it in? What software do you use?
Um, I have a couple of different ones I'll use. I'm not going to pick one. No, that's, there's a Visio.
Visio.
Visio's the best one actually. I don't know if I still have it.
I am sending you my handwritten.
That's fine.
I have Visio here, Wayne.
Oh, you do? Okay, great.
All right. Then I'm sending it to you, Jim. You can plunk this in and then send it to Wayne for anything else.
You got it.
All right. I'll, I'll white out and fit in what Joan sends me and we'll go from there. Okay. That's 4.7. Now we need 4.11.
Yeah, I'm going to combine 411 and 413 because they're both CBDG, um, just in the interest of time. Um, I, I talked a little bit about.
Can we do 412 first? The advertising piece?
Yeah. And I think the easiest way here is to volunteer one of us to work with Jim on wording. Um, and what we can get on there. Like I think we discussed last time, I don't know how many characters we can get on there or, you know, how many times it rotates. So, um,
Okay, so.
I'm up for the volunteer.
On lighted signs, um, I can do that.
Well, at least you'll know the right words. So what we're trying to say, Ronnie, right?
Okay. Yep. I can do the lighted signs. I'll volunteer to, um, get with Jim. I have to give him this written thing anyway. So lighted sign verbiage, um, a flyer for fuel assistance. We should put something.
And that, that goes to 411, 413. So that, that's a perfect segue to that. Because I had a, I had a discussion about with Jim, um, about the fuel assistance and to Joan, your earlier point to me, um, fuel assistance goes through the board of selectmen, um, and the town administrator. So, um, as he works for us. So that's the simple answer there. So Jim, I don't know if you want to give a quick overview of how this is supposed to work or whether we have to have a call with CBDG?
Sure. I actually had a conversation with Wayne Dara from COG about it. And they have to, their regulations require them to partner with one of the area federal fuel assistance providers. And for us, that is the Monticic Opportunities Council in Pittsburgh. We are listed as, uh, one of the communities that come under their umbrella. Um, he's had email and phone messages left for them. I've left a couple of messages myself and haven't had a response. The board of directors, the, the Pittsburgh chief of police is on the board of directors. He's actually a high school friend. I reached out to him today and he actually put me in touch with the, um, vice president that handles fool, uh, fuel assistance. So I'm putting COG and she together, her together. I'm putting them together tomorrow. Um, so Wayne can get his information into them. Um, there's a, there's a wrinkle in how fuel assistance can be distributed through the CDVG program such that you can't supplant another benefit that exists. And I'm parroting words now. I'm, I'm not going to profess to understand. And I'm parroting words now, I'm not going to profess to understand the intricacies here. But they need to make certain that anybody in Townsend that is going to avail themselves to the CDBG has already gone through the other primary fuel assistance programs first. And that's generally done through the Opportunities Council and whatever community that you're in. So hopefully they'll have clarity on that tomorrow when they have the conversation. And I'll be sending an email out to all parties that have been discussing this for the last month or more, once we have that update tomorrow.
Can you point me in this document that's in our packet to where that's explained about fuel assistance? Because I thought I read somewhere in CDBG stuff that you would just use your provider.
You, you do. The way I understood it, Veronica, is that when you avail yourself to the CDBG fuel assistance, you use your own provider. But before you can be approved to utilize the CDBG fuel assistance, you have to have first gone through your, there's a, there's a primary federal grant distributor, and that for us is MACH. So.
Right, I, but where in here does it describe this?
I'm not suggesting to you that it is. What I said is I had a phone call today with COG and it was explained to me. So at that point, I reached out to the chief in Fitchburg to try to shake somebody loose at, at MACH. So I, as I said, I'm parroting the words that I've been told. I won't profess to, to be able to point you to the regulation. But we should know more tomorrow after the two of them are able to have communicated. Apparently they're, they're working remotely, they're not staffed in the office, and it's not been an uncommon thing for people to not be able to get the response back. So we, we worked on it from the back channel.
Jim, I'm here if you need me to jump in on anything.
Oh, that, that sounds like.
Citizen one.
Citizen one is Wayne, Wayne Dara, the president from COG. So Mr. Chairman, if, if you want just the nickel tour, the quick.
Nickel tour, real quick.
Sure.
Okay, so as Jim was trying to explain, federal funds cannot be used to supplant other federal funds. So in order to be eligible for the Townsend Supplemental Fuel Assistance Program, you have to have applied to MACH and used up all of your LIHEAP, Low Income Housing Assistance Program funds for the heating season. And then you can apply for additional funds from the town. Or if you've applied to MACH and you've been determined not to be eligible based on their income guidelines, then you can apply to our program, which has more generous income guidelines than the LIHEAP program.
I have three questions, please. So are we sure that the people at MACH are going to convey to people that the guidelines through the CDBG Grant Fuel Assistance Program were more generous? Two, why is this only happening now so far into the grant, which was 10-1 of 18? And three, please, why is COG getting paid $8,000 to administer the fuel assistance portion when it looks like there's not going to be much fuel assistance out of the grant? Please.
I'm sorry, those were very long questions. Do you want to go back to one for me?
One, yes. How can we be, how can we be sure that MACH is going to sufficiently express to people that apply to them for fuel assistance, since that's the first chain, right? The first level they have to go through, that our fuel, that the CDBG fuel assistance guidelines are, are more generous?
Well, I think the, first of all, we're all working towards the same end, so you have to assume their goal is the same as ours, which is to make sure no one goes without fuel assistance. And I, you seem to think that this is a conflicting program with theirs and they're gonna try to protect what they're doing when it's, it's not, it's not conflicting at all, it's complementary. So if they have someone come to them for fuel assistance and they can't provide them any more assistance because they've already used up their benefits, or they don't income qualify for the LIHEAP program, then I think it, we're gonna assume they're gonna try to pass them along to someone else who might be able to help them, that being Townsend Fuel Assistance Program.
Right, so maybe we could supply them a script for phase, the next phase. If, if MACH can't help them or they've used up their MACH benefits or whatever, they can say, oh, you're in Townsend and there's, they have a script, go here, do this, do that, much more.
I think, I think the, I think the simple one there, Joan, is to just give the new phone number to, that is gonna get to Jim, so ask for assistance. I don't think it has to be very complicated.
Okay.
All right, I, I think we can put something on the flyer. Try MACH first, and if you don't qualify, call whatever the number is.
Or if, or if you've spent all your MACH money.
Right.
Then come to us.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, is MACH aware that we, Townsend, have these funds available?
I've been reaching out to them, trying to inform them of that. I've left several voicemail messages, I've sent an email.
Are you talking?
Received any response?
Are you talking recently or are you talking over the past two years?
Well, this has been recently. So.
Yeah, on the December 9th extension letter to extend the CDBG grant that was signed, it states, we, that stated December 9th, it says, we have reached out to MACH indicating that it was recent.
Correct.
Okay, I don't have, I don't have the extension letter. That isn't something that was discussed at the Board of Selectmen. Okay, so, all right, so MACH now knows that Townsend has fuel assistance. This isn't something that they've regularly done over the past two winters, in other words.
Not to my knowledge.
Okay.
It doesn't sound like anyone at MACH has been, we haven't had contact yet, so I'm not sure they do know.
Okay.
They do know because I have a response email from the police chief in Fitchburg copying the Vice President, who, not for nothing else, who went to high school with. So she does have knowledge that that's what this call tomorrow is to be about, our fuel assistance in the CDBG program interfacing with theirs.
Thank you, okay.
Thank goodness you went to high school in Fitchburg, Jim. Go ahead, Joan, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. So my second question is, is why is this, did this only happen now if we've had the grant for so long? Why, why wasn't this set up before last winter's heating season, please?
Um, it, it should have been. I, but we were delayed with our startup for a number of reasons. We were, we were kind of brought in as the administrator of last resort. So this wasn't a contract that I was prepared to administer. And I've had, I have manpower issues trying to administer it, but that's my problem, it's not your problem. And then, you know, COVID happened and everything slowed down and we missed last year's heating season.
Well, that, your contract, Wayne, with the, with the town, that Mr. Kreidler's got two signatures on there and you've got one signature on there, was signed on, in June of 2019. COVID happened March of 2020.
I'm aware of when COVID happened.
Right. So that's a concern. Also, can you tell me, please, then, how, why, then, we're, we've got $8,000 going to COG to pay you to administer the fuel assistance program, please?
That's $8,000 in our contract. You haven't paid us $8,000.
Well, so far.
I haven't charged, I haven't charged the, I haven't charged the town anything for the fuel assistance project program since last February.
Right, so $1,800 we, we've paid for the fuel assistance so, thus far?
Yes, I, I stopped, when there was nothing happening there, I stopped billing the town for that.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, hey, Wayne, can we just take in, have Veronica take in, she's still sharing that screen, so can we get that to go to regular?
Stop share.
There you go.
So Jim, keep us abreast of the discussion you have tomorrow and we'll get some more information about the, the fuel assistance, the CBDG grant.
Indeed, I will.
Okay, thank you. And 413, the CDB report, CBDG report, including status of funding, is that what we just talked about? I, I don't understand.
I, I had questions there. This was me that put it on, and of course, I have, my page is all turned down. I, I guess my, how much of the fees have been paid? I think we got that answered. Where are the reports? It looks like there are quarterly reports that were made through this. Can, can we see those?
Sure, they're, they're filed electronically through the state's Community Development Grant Management System, but I can print, I can print those and email the quarterly reports we've submitted to Jim, to Jim.
Okay, there's probably, what, like six of them or so? It's, it's been about a year and a half?
Yeah, could be, could be more.
Okay.
But whatever there is, I'll print and email to Jim.
Yeah, I'd like to see that.
I made, Ronnie, the grant management plan and the contract the town has with COG and the contract with the CDBG all state that we're to have regular reports made by the Town Administrator and Mr. Dara to the Board of Selectmen throughout the life of the contract. And as far as I know, I've read every single meeting minute of many committees since 2018, there have been no reports made, except for two very brief statements Suleceo made that she had signed some things and sent them in. But we have not had an accounting report on the grants' status.
Okay, Veronica, what else?
Okay, i- is that the case, Wayne? I haven't been on the, certainly since I've been on the Board of Selectmen, that's not the case.
Well, I wasn't aware that, that we required quarterly reports, so.
Okay.
I mean, I submit the quarterly reports on the town's behalf. It's, I have not been requested to attend a Selectmen's meeting. But, you know, I have no problem with that.
Okay, the, the grant ends on June 30th, correct?
As of right now, that's the end date, yes.
Okay, and then it, I just read what is in here. I don't know, it's the agreement by and between the Town of Townsend and COG. The town hereby authorizes the consultant to engage Mr. Don Bucianari. Was this someone who was hired to manage the grant for Townsend?
No, Don is a subcontractor I use in a lot of my communities, he's my housing rehab specialist.
And so he's doing the housing piece of this?
Well, he's doing that, not the whole housing piece. Don goes out, meets with homeowners, does an inspection of their property, reviews, the lead inspectors report, develops a set of work specifications, works with the homeowner to finalize that. He then coordinates the bidding process, holds a pre-bid showing at, at the property with interested contractors. And then when con, when construction is underway, Don goes out and inspects the jobs and authorizes pay recs, et cetera.
Okay, so.
So he's a technical person.
In those reports, we can see how many homes have been able to take advantage of the funds and how much funds are remaining in the grant, is that correct?
Nothing that Don produces would tell you that. Don is, Don's a project by project person, he's not, he doesn't have the overall.
But your reports should provide us with that.
Yeah, I think I provided that information when I was requested by Ms. Savoy. I gave her the amount of money that, the number of projects that have been completed, those that are under construction, those that are under contract, the amount a month that have been committed, et cetera.
That's what you sent us, Jim? Did you send us that?
I sent you that.
And Joan got it from, Joan made a public records request to COG. COG responded to Joan and Joan forwarded it to you guys.
Okay, so I have to hunt that up.
Yeah, oh, hold on, when, Joan, did, when did you send that?
Last week, it's, it's some, some numbers, I'll, I'll resend it tomorrow, but.
What email did you send it? Send it to my town email?
Your harbor email.
No, that's why.
Use the town.
Use my town address, please?
Yep.
Veronica, in, in the interest of time, can I suggest you maybe get on the call with Jim tomorrow?
Well, I have one other thing with Wayne on here, I just want to, under, this is G on page nine of this thing, affordable housing restriction. Rehabilitation loans made under this contract shall be secured by a mortgage on the subject property, which includes language restricting rent levels and units occupied by low and moderate income tenants for so long as the loan is outstanding in the case of owner occupied properties and for a minimum of blah, blah, blah. Do the houses that are being rehabbed fall onto the town's affordable housing list? Because I know this is something that on Planning Board we were concerned about. We have, so I, I am wondering if these homes that are being rehabbed through CDBG funds and are owner occupied, do they, do they fall onto our list and should housing be made aware of them?
No, they do not qualify for the town's affordable housing inventory.
Why not?
Because the only time they do is when you have an affordable housing restriction and the only time you have an affordable housing restriction is when it's an owner, is, is when it's a investor owned property.
But this has, I thought that too, until I read this, and it has a, an and, and for a minimum of 15 years in the case of investor owned properties. It looks like if the, it is an owner occupied property, whether it has many units or a single unit, if it is owner occupied, it looks like it, it has restricted language through the term of the, you know, mortgage or whatever.
I'm sorry, but I don't know what you're reading from.
Okay, let me, it's, what was in our packet?
Veronica, can I ask, is this a Planning Board thing or is this a Board of Selectmen thing?
This is a Board of Selectmen thing if the Board of Selectmen is who manages this grant.
Okay.
The housing piece of it would be a Board of Selectmen, but we are the ones that manage this grant and we need to let housing know. It's more, you know, Planning Board is where I learned about affordable housing. But no, in any event, it's a housing thing then. We are, we are the managers of this grant, but we need to work cooperatively with our housing department to make sure that we do build that affordable housing list for the town. So it's, it's page nine, section G.
Of what, of what document?
What document?
What document is this, Jim? I'll read you the title, Massachusetts Community Development Lock Grant Program, CFDA Number 14.228, CDF and ME, federal fiscal years 2018, Town of Townsend Grant Number 840, Attachment A, additional conditions, and. So this would be an Attachment A on that.
It's our grant, it's our grant doc from DHCD.
A grant agreement?
Yep.
And it's under G for housing activities, number one, affordable housing restriction. So.
Age number, for any chance?
Nine.
For housing activities, it's under that?
Correct, number one under that, Joe.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So I just had a question about that, you don't have to answer. So I just had a question about that. You don't have to answer that now, but I would like to know.
I I did just answer it. They do not count towards your subsidized housing inventory. Unless they are investor owned.
For so long as the loan is outstanding in the case of owner occupied properties and for a minimum of 15 years in the case of investor owned properties. I'm reading this differently from you, apparently.
No, that's that's what an affordable, that's what an affordable housing restriction does. It ensures for a minimum of 15 years that the unit remains. Right? And you have to read further. For the purposes of this section, owner occupied is defined as a property of no of no more than four units, one of which is occupied by the owner.
So if it's one unit and occupied by the owner, would that not qualify as owner occupied?
No. Sorry, you're misreading this.
I don't know. I read it different from you. We don't have to answer this now, but I would like an answer to that.
And then you have my answer. The answer is no, it does not count on the subsidized housing inventory.
Hey, Wayne, Wayne? I'm just, I'm not trying to be rude here, but I don't know the gentleman that's speaking, but I don't think that that has to be this kind of tone at a meeting.
I apologize for my frustration, but I don't know what to tell you. I've I've given the answer three times. And I'm being asked to give it, I guess, differently another time. I don't know, but.
Well, I guess we're all reading something maybe a little bit different, so.
And again, I'm going to step in here. Jim, can you work with Veronica and Wayne to to work on the answer there? I don't think we need to have a an overall discussion on this tonight because we're all reading something differently.
Okay, I think I'd like the housing authority involved too in that discussion.
Thank you.
Fantastic.
Okay, and I do want one last thing. I want to read for the record the email that Joan sent us. I'd just like to read this into the record.
I don't see the need, but go ahead.
Hello, Townsend BOS. After much thought, I'm writing to request that the record be set straight at tonight's Board of Selectmen meeting. As to the authority, the Townsend Affordable Housing Trust Fund has in regard to the administration of Townsend's 800,000 plus fiscal year 18 community development block grant. At the January 28, 2021 BOS meeting, our town administrator James Kreidler intimated that recent CDBG fuel assistance to our town residents has been was delayed due to my actions. I want to publicly acknowledge that neither I nor the Townsend Affordable Housing Trust, of which I am chair, has or has ever had any authority whatsoever to direct how the grant is managed or administered. To declare otherwise is patently false. Jim Kreidler oversees the grant and its management partner, Community Opportunities Group. Through my research, I've simply served to inform and alert the BOS and the town of its assistance. Thank you for your dedicated service to our town. Sincerely, Joan Savoy, Townsend Affordable Housing Trust Chair.
And Mr. Chairman, without having had the benefit of seeing that before it was read, I won't object to the fact that a complaint was just lodged against me without notice on a public hearing. That's fine. But I will reserve my opportunity to offer a response with the facts of the meeting minutes at your next meeting, just so the record, as Joan says, is clear. Thank you.
Okay. All right, let's move on to 414. Review sign, chapter 90, project request Highland Street. Thank you, Wayne.
Thank you.
Being on the call.
Thank you.
So Jim, this is a one chapter 90 for the year.
Yes, the first at least. So Jim Smith has submitted the project request form to do a milling and overlay and structure repair on Highland. So you have in your packets.
Yep.
The document is usually and customarily presented to the board with his recommendation and signature and the accountant's signature attesting to the fact that funds are available. And if it meets your approval, you would vote to authorize it being sent to the state for processing.
Okay, can I get a motion here?
I just want to make sure I'm on the right page. Jim, is that the one that says Highland Street cost estimate of milling and resurfacing? Is that what I'm looking at?
Yep.
Yes, it is.
All right, thank you. Thank you. I I how how do you want that worded, Wayne?
Just to move that we sign out a session with chapter 90 project requests for for Highland Street.
I make a motion, we sign out a session, the project request for Highland Street.
Second?
I was in favor.
Veronica Kell, yes.
George Shank, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes. All right, on to your ads, June Veronica, 415 CARES Act.
Yeah, that was, we were to talk about, I thought, additional fund requests for the COVID round two. Do those go in now or is it okay to wait until the 16th for that?
It's, Mr. Chairman, it's actually the deadline for what they're calling the reconciliation phase. So there was phase one, phase two, now reconciliation was originally to end in February. It's been pushed off until the end of March now. So given the length of this agenda and the fact that a specific request didn't come in on your list to have it on there, choosing to push it off because we did get that extra month's time. So for those that are following along at home, it's basically $831,000 that the town was allocated through the CARES Act. And doing the accounting of rounds one and two that have been approved, finding out what is available left, and then the discussion at the board level about the two requests that we have for those remaining funds. So that can take place at your next meeting.
So this is 415 on our agenda? Is that what you said?
It it's not on there. It was added joke. That was.
Oh, okay, yeah, I don't have a.
No, no, it's you wouldn't because we just added it before.
All right, no problem. Sorry about that.
For the next meeting.
416, the letter from Karen.
Yeah, is Karen Clement on? I see her there if she can unmute to make her request. You want to ask Karen to?
I don't see her anymore.
She's right down here.
She was unmuted for a minute.
I don't see her on online.
She's right down here. I'm asking her to unmute. There she is.
Hi there.
Hi Karen, go ahead.
This was a request from the friends of the library in cooperation with the library in order to do a hunt around town about. Let's see, to see places in town, to get people out and moving as a family. Kind of similar to like the tree hunt that we did just to get people out. But it is as a fundraiser. Different stops would be they would take pictures of like in front of the town hall next to the cannons. Would be 10 or 12 spots to stop at thinking TEO Reed House, the the first schoolhouse, that rock that's up on Meeting House Hill Road. In order to get people out, see a little bit of the history, take a picture over near TEO so people realize where it is, what it, you know, what it's used for. And basically just asking for permission to have this done through the selectman's office because a lot of the stops would be on town owned property. Could be the, you know, at the library, maybe a fire station, the police station. But we wanted to kind of get your blessing first before we even approached any of these places in order to coordinate this.
So this is just like the tree thing you did?
Pretty much similar, right?
The building instead of a tree?
Yes. Building, rocks, cannons. It is just get people out and about. I guess Charles for the library had done it a while back. It was a great fundraiser for their friends group. And I guess they've got families out together taking they'll they'll take pictures at those locations. It would submit if there's 10 pictures, you know, they would submit 10, you know, 10 places, 10 pictures. It just sounds like it'd be a fun day for people as as a family or as a group going out. All social distancing would be adhered to, of course, masks in place.
Yep, I don't have a problem with it. I don't know if you guys do. I think it's great.
I think it's a great idea. Good job.
Do we need a motion to to take it forward?
I think we did last time.
We did too for the tree.
Yeah, so just a motion to acknowledge and approve the library's plan to what kind of contest? I forget what you said. Scavenger hunt?
I say to scavenger hunt, I guess.
Okay.
Named it yet. We just want permission first.
It sounds like the fourth grade history project that they used to do at Squanacook.
Oh, that was wonderful. Yes.
It was.
Sorry, Joe, a motion to approve the fourth grade project for Townsend Library.
I make a motion, we approve the.
Townsend scavenger hut.
Townsend scavenger hunt.
Second.
All those in favor?
Veronica Kell, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes.
George Shank, yes.
All right, thank you, Karen.
Thank you. Appreciate you.
All right, last one Veronica's DLTA.
That was the 43D and I I thought we opted to move that to.
Okay.
Didn't we?
I just wrote it down.
43Ds, one was moved, which is the the 43D, I mean, excuse me, the two DLTA's.
Oh.
But I do have the one that I got from Lance and Beth today, which is in a collaborative effort to get Townsend's master plan ready for approval in fiscal 21. The planning board is seeking DLTA grant funds to do some GIS work for the final document. There was a deadline today at three o'clock to be submitted, so. Lance signed and asked that I sign as well. Did have the proviso put in here that it is all subject to. Let's see, with this collaboration, the planning board, the master plan committee and the town administrator agreed to seek the assistance under eligible projects. Bullet one, planning ahead for housing and bullet two, planning ahead for growth, subject to the support of the Board of Selectmen at their public meeting on February 2, 2021. So before I was going to sign anything, I wanted to make certain that it was clear that it would require your endorsement. So this letter that went out in time for the three o'clock deadline only lives if you vote to endorse this evening. And I request that you do so.
So just a motion to endorse the.
LTA grant.
Can I ask a question? Is this it's a DLTA grant for maps for the master plan?
It reads the Townsend Master Plan Committees in the final stages of compiling this comprehensive document for review from the planning board before submitting to the Board of Selectmen later this year. This master plan is vital to our community's future planning efforts and does hinge on several other important boards and reports that are currently in process. Having a current master plan is vital to our town's need. Then it says, it is apparent that mapping services are much needed in our current document to be more comprehensive and encompass our needs at this time. We're requesting this high quality GIS mapping service that we received from MRPC in past efforts in order to complete this last major milestone. We're requesting approximately 16 maps for the draft Townsend Master Plan update document and 24 to 32 hours of consulting from MRPC planning staff to answer questions and review specific plan sections.
Okay, not to throw a monkey wrench in, but question, what is the timing of the grant?
It was presented to me this morning as as the deadline was today. That's all I can tell you, Veronica.
When is the grant awarded? When will the maps be made? Because my experience with DLTA is that you you get the award sometime around May or June and you get the work done by December 30. And I I question that only because it's the master plan and it would be great to have the master plan. And don't we have someone on staff who does mapping?
We we do. I saw Chad's just raised his hand, so maybe he can offer some response to your questions, Veronica.
Okay.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yeah.
We had, I'm trying to expedite this for the master plan. I've talked with Lance in regards to this. We've had, they had chapters that they are writing. We have 16 identified maps that we want to be able to get on, get to. Townsend has a a portion of GIS services which are now being used for the the zoning. So we wanted to get this in so that if if we do get these maps done, it's in a timeframe that we can actually get them paid instead of wait, instead of getting the master plan written and then have to write for another another grant down the road. So we're looking at to get this done by June, I would assume.
And so the DLTA monies will be awarded like now or soon so that the maps can be ready by June.
Correct.
That's the timeframe I'm asking about.
Yeah.
Because I'm wondering if we can get them more quickly in house.
But the deadline for it is was today. And then we'll know more after how many, because we don't know how many were were submitted and all of that kind of stuff. So once we find out that, we can work on a timeline. We have to do an MOU as well. So, you know, we can do it as quickly as we can.
Okay.
Can I get a motion, Joe?
Yeah, well, I don't have anything in front of me that we're talking about, so.
Just a motion to approve the DLTA grant form submitted by the planning board.
Make a motion, the DTLA mapping grant proposed by the planning board.
A second?
I was in favor.
Veronica Kell, yes.
Frank, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes. Thanks, Jess.
Thank you.
All right, 51 DCR property on Route 13. I have no idea what this one is about.
We've been carrying this over the last several meetings. I did reach out to the woman Veronica, whose name is escaping me right now.
Christine Barry.
Christine, right. Left her a voicemail, had not heard back from her, so I got with Vicky, our assessor, to get all of her records and files. And I'm I'm not finding that we're going to get to the position where we're going to be able to identify the the owner of record of the trust. Now, I know that we are proceeding through the tax title process and I know that DCR or Fish and Game would rather go and make a purchase from the trust instead of having to go through the lengthy process of the tax title, but unless somebody knows a way to determine who who is the active face of the trust, I'm not certain where we're gonna go.
So the if we go through tax title, then eventually we how far into tax title is this? Do you know?
Without Anna here, I I don't know. I can see if.
Anna's gone.
I can see if I can see if Rebecca can pull up the file. I'm not certain that she's conversant in this this part of that job, but I can try to find out. The bigger issue is there's a year right of redemption. So even if we go to tax title and we have a taking, somebody can come out of the woodwork the 364th day and make claim and pay back taxes and take the property. So that's why DCR wants, I would imagine, wants to avoid that process because it it just leaves the thing in limbo with 100% risk until that last day.
Okay, all right. Well, anyway, all right.
Okay, thanks. 52 Purple Heart Community, we I believe all of us got an email from Joe Mendoza. It was all, excuse me. And we talked about this at a previous meeting about the Purple Heart Community and he's asking us to make a vote to organize and pursue making the town a Purple Heart City on August 7. And he's volunteered to take a lead on this as he is a Purple Heart recipient. So can I get a motion to organize or to approve and organize and pursuing making the town a Purple Heart Community on August 7?
I make a motion that we accept and approve the town becoming a Purple Heart Community on August 7.
With with the understanding that the the Veterans Office?
With the.
Office of Veterans Affairs in town, is that correct? Will take the lead on
Yes.
Doing whatever is required.
Yeah, and if memory serves me right, the they're they're still pursuing the the traveling wall. The wall that heals the purple.
I know it's supposed to be here this summer.
Last summer, yeah. Excuse me. So this may go in conjunction with that. So can I get a second? Excuse me. So this may go in conjunction with that. So, um, can I get a second?
Second?
All those in favor?
Hi, can I have a question?
Oh, Joe, yeah, sure. Go ahead.
No, go ahead. Yeah. Uh, in order to participate on, uh, designating a city as a Purple Heart community, you have to have it on August seventh. Uh, that is Purple Heart Day throughout the country.
Okay, all right. I didn't know that. Thank you.
Proclamation is read and you invite, uh, the Purple Heart holders that are in the community to the event. Hopefully, you know, we'll be prepared to have more than twenty-five people there. So I just want to make sure that, I know the wall is coming, but I think it's in September or late September. So, okay, well, that's why I'm online here, which, okay.
Appreciate it. But then it means we gotta turn.
Well, I mean, it's, it's a, it's a very simple thing to do. Um, I'll take the lead on that and I'll give you an update. Come around June, that's when the selectmen should come up and vote on a proclamation to make this, uh, the town a Purple Heart community. So I would get the, the, uh, the letter that has to be read in order to make the Purple Heart community, uh, at the town meeting.
Okay.
Okay. Contact the other veterans organizations to be involved, the VFW, American Legion, and the auto of the Purple Heart, okay?
Perfect. Thank you, Joe. Appreciate it. Uh, all those in favor?
Veronica, yes.
Your shank, yes.
Thanks. And Wayne Miller, yes, sorry.
Um, Mr. Chair, if I could just for a second.
Yes, Joe.
The, the traveling wall, I believe, is supposed to be here around the July fourth weekend. I believe July first to July fourth.
That's what I remember seeing too somewhere in there. Um, with that being said, we don't have to decide on it tonight, but, I was the board of selectmen's representative for that, um, previous scheduled visit. So, um, I'm gonna point, um, the, the team to one of you two to, um, pick that up at some point, um, after April.
We will do that.
We will do that.
It was very interesting.
If the wall is gonna be here on July fourth, could we somehow have some sort of, you know, it could be the weekend before, the day before, have, have, read the proclamation around that time and then make it like an event. So then the wall comes July fourth weekend, you know, so maybe the.
I don't think so since, I don't think so since, he said, I didn't know Purple Heart, there was a Purple Heart Day. I think that's when.
We don't have Purple Heart Day on the seventh, but we have to do the proclamation. It says a month prior to the ceremony. So a month prior to Purple Heart Day, if I'm reading this right, the selectmen have to make a proper proclamation with the proper, proper verbal. Is that true? I don't know.
The proper verb.
Dedication on Purple Heart Day.
Yeah, and that, that's great. That, that coincides perfectly.
And, and at that point too, Veronica, you'll have a good veterans population at that event to be able to let people know, if you are a Purple Heart recipient, please make certain you're in touch with us so we can get you on the list for that ceremony a month out.
Right. Kind of like advertising. So, okay.
Let's hope, let's hope we can have both in person. All right, five-three Jim, town administrator updates.
Yes, um, kind of a ten thousand foot view on the fiscal twenty-two budget. Um, I don't know. I know that, um, Wayne, you were on the call last night with the school for their public discussion of their budget.
Yes, they both kind of wrapped together.
Veronica, you were on there as well, I think. And Joe, I think you bumped into something with snowy, snowy nights and, and and your real job.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, um, just for everybody that didn't have a chance to see, the school rolled out their most recent version of their operating budget proposal for fiscal twenty-two. They were very well pleased that they've got it reduced to a two point seven nine percent increase overall, which sounds commendable. Um, the, the unfortunate part of that is when you translate that into the actual assessments to each community, it's still a roughly six percent increase on our assessment and a six hundred thousand dollar, slightly north of six hundred thousand dollar, um, year-over-year increase that's being asked for. To give you perspective from the town of Townsend's fiscal situation, we can raise under Prop two and a half and with the new state aid that's being projected by the governor and at least in this early phase of the state's budget development, roughly five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. So the budget that was rolled out by the schools last night seeking six hundred thousand plus takes every dollar that's generated locally, plus asks us to dig deeper into the existing all other departments budgets. Um, I was really happy to hear the town administrator in Pepperell echo our concerns and state that Pepperell too would be looking at, in their case, because of a higher student population, eight hundred thousand dollar increase over last year and that they can't do that. There's no way that their budget could absorb that. So the, the reason that that's important to us is because under the, the regional school district agreement, the school presents a budget and if two-thirds of the three communities support it, it's adopted. So if we were the only ones that were having an issue and Ashby and Pepperell supported it, we'd be left holding the bag and have to come up with a way to fund that assessment. So I was heartened to hear the superintendent and members of the committee and the business manager say that they're gonna go back at it and seek to address areas where they can make further cuts. One of the other pieces that's important when you're looking at a school budget is they certify the equivalent of what we on the general government side call free cash. They call excess and deficiency. They certainly get that certified every year. They were certified this year at three point five million dollars in excess and deficiency. So that is a result of either taking in more revenue or spending less budget at the end of the year. So when you balance everything out, it's three point five million dollars left on the table that they are able to then have certified for use in a subsequent fiscal year. The budget that they put out last night contemplates using one point five million of that excess and deficiency. So just to give the, the impact of the additional use of excess and deficiency for us, if they were hypothetically to take an additional five hundred thousand from their excess and deficiency and add it to the budget within a margin of error, understanding the formula as best we can, that would serve to drop our assessment from six percent down to roughly four percent, from six hundred thousand plus down to just slightly north of four hundred thousand. And while that's still an enormous amount of money out of our five seventy-five we can generate, we would be close to be able to come to balance based on everything else we know today. So from the school budget perspective and the hearing last night, the number that they put out is not good for us. The message was made clear. I know that the select board members prior to Joe's, um, election were on record with our liaison, Mr. Templeton, who wanted to be here but is in negotiations tonight. You're on record as saying that that type of a half million dollar plus increase, again, which would be the fifth year running, is not something that you support and believe that we couldn't sustain that. So I just wanna, while Joe's on now, give you each the opportunity to chime in on that point, just to make certain I'm not marching down the road thinking that, uh, I'm, I'm marching to your beat only to find out that I'm not, so.
You are.
Yeah, I, I agree. I have, I have a question. If they do use more of their E and D funds or they, they said insurance negotiations and other things that were unknowns that could, um, make it more favorable for us.
Right.
As far as our assessment went, um, you just said that if they do that, we'll have a, um, a balanced budget or almost imbalanced budget. When you say that, are you including in that, um, putting all of our employees on the new wage, um, matrix and.
I'm gonna go there right now. Yeah, I'm gonna go there right now.
Increases.
Yep. So, so what I said, and I was very cautious about saying it, is in balance with what we know now and where we are now. So then I would transition into where are we now? So in the town budget, and when we're done talking tonight, I will send you each, as well as members of the finance committee, I think it's version eight. Yeah, it's version eight right now. So there's a, a new date on the bottom in the V eight. So you know, when you're looking at them, um, to know in sequence where we are. Um, the budget that I have on the screen now is, is all put together before departmental budgets have been submitted. They're not due, as you know, until this Friday. So what does this budget that I'm gonna send you tonight represent? It represents what we know for state aid, which is as of right now, the governor's budget presentation, which is a three and a half percent increase for us, which is interesting because one line goes up three and a half percent, but the assessment side also goes up. So it only nets us about fifty grand. Um, still, it, it's better to have fifty positive than fifty negative, but those numbers are in there. We still have the House, the Senate, and then the conference committee. Before we'll know what the real numbers are and that could be months yet. So just so you know, it's in there. It's highlighted and it's highlighted because it is just a placeholder until we know something better. You will see that local receipts are projected at a five percent decrease and given the fact that we have experienced COVID and we expect to continue to experience the lingering effects of COVID, we need to be cautious. So you'll see a five percent reduction projected in our local receipts. The, the actual expenditure side of things, um, you'll see last year's budgets rolled over and where we know we have increased costs that are tied to something specific and knowable, the new number is input. So for instance, we received our assessment from the, um, the regional retirement system and I will just take a second to grab that number. So when you see the budget, you'll see that that is colored in to highlight the fact that that is a new number and that has gone up twenty-six thousand dollars over last year. So you'll see that. There are several numbers that'll also be highlighted and you'll be able to toggle between the, the spreadsheets. Those of you that have played with this to date, you'll, you'll know that there are tabs across the bottom that things are tied back and forth to, but, um, health insurance is currently plugged at a five percent increase. We had a discussion earlier tonight that could lead us to something less than a five percent increase. But we don't know. It, it's not yet real, so. Jeff, I gotta, I gotta mute you. Sorry. Um, so again, to be conservative, I've got five percent carried there. If it's less, then we, we fix that cell and it's gonna generate, um, a better picture for us. Additionally, I've taken all of the Collins Institute Compensation and Classification Plan data from the spreadsheet, Veronica, particularly the one that you've been putting a lot of time and effort in on.
Need to talk about that, but that's another story. Keep going.
Yep. I, I think I probably found what you're gonna tell me about, but absolutely we should. Um, so we've taken, if you have employee John Doe, who is currently in a, in a grade two, making fifteen dollars an hour, and the Collins Center says that they should be making seventeen dollars an hour, um, you're going to go and place them in the grade that they are in for the Collins report at the closest two, but higher than where they currently are. So it'll be at that seventeen. So what you'll see in this document is notations in the note column, says Collins Center, Collins Center, Collins Center against everybody's, um, particular salary line. You'll find that the, what we had anticipated was going to be between a sixty-five and a seventy-five thousand dollar implementation cost, uh, is closer to seventy-five and it's all rolled in right now. So the document I'm gonna send out is gonna show the salary impact of bringing people into Collins. We have a discussion later tonight. We have a discussion later tonight in executive session under collective bargaining where we can have the discussion about what that means. Is it enough? Is it not enough? What are the unions thinking? So we'll be able to get into that in a little bit more detail in that other session tonight. But with everything that I just laid out for you, assuming the school is, assuming the school is at six percent, assuming that health insurance is at five percent, we're about two hundred thousand, with Collins implemented, we're about two hundred and six, two hundred and seven thousand dollars out. So what's going to change between now and the next version that I'm gonna get to? Well, we're gonna have every department's budget submitted. So instead of just carrying expenses from last year, we'll have their asks this year. You should know that the asks this year were mandated by the letter that's, that you authorized be sent out that would be level funded. So my expectation is that we're safe with what we've got plugged in here unless there's something extraordinary that they're able to, as a department, make an argument for to your satisfaction. We should be safe in that regard, but that is subject to change and we'll know more within the next week because budgets are due back on Friday. Additionally, the, um, as I stated, the, the state numbers, we're gonna know over the next number of months are subject to change. Within the next three weeks, we should know something on the health insurance and this should start tightening up. Just for, for grins, if when you have this spreadsheet and you wanna play with something, if you go to the benefits tab and for the, um, health insurance, you plug in a one percent, it'll translate back to that summary sheet and show you what the deficit or projected overage is. If you go to the expenditure projection tab where the school budget expense is, there's a cell that's highlighted that says six percent. If you wanna put that in as a four to see what it does, that brings us level. That takes that two hundred thousand right off the table, that, the, the deficit that's currently projected in this version of the budget. So you have the, the sensitivities between all of these pages to be able to, to tabletop different things to see how it would impact the bottom line. So I'll be emailing that out when I, before I leave tonight. Yes, Veronica?
Two questions. Uh, one is, has fiscal year twenty free cash been certified for the town?
Not as of yet.
Um, okay. And then the next question is, can the town implement, um, weigh the Collins Center matrix, um, even if the, uh, union contract is not yet settled?
It's excellent question. You can budget it, but.
Not budget, well, budget it and implement it without.
No, you cannot.
Why?
Except with the, the law. If you have a unionized group, you cannot give them a salary increase unless it's negotiated at the table and agreed to by the parties.
Even if the town adopted a different wage matrix?
If it results, it doesn't matter if you adopt a matrix or you take up a different religion. It, it doesn't matter. You cannot change somebody's terms or benefits of their employment in a unionized environment without agreement of the parties. So you can budget it and it is then available for the possibility of negotiating to agreement and then the accountant would be able to release those funds based on that agreement of the parties. But otherwise, you can budget it and implement it, but it will sit there.
As long as you don't lower anyone's, um.
That is not the law. Uh, there, there is case law that.
All right, we won't argue it now, but.
It's not an argument, it's fact. There, there are cases that show that somebody saved a, a child from a burning building and a mayor gave him an extra day off and it was grieved and the community lost because everybody else didn't.
Exactly the same in my mind.
Exactly the same. You cannot change a term, condition of employment without negotiation, period.
Jim?
Yeah.
Just negotiations. All right. So I'm new at this, so please help me through it, guide me through it. When we go into negotiations, how's that process work?
We're gonna talk about it later tonight in executive session under negotiations with AFSP.
Yep. That's what I was just gonna say too.
All right, that's good. Thank you.
Sure. Is that it, Jim?
Uh, on that point, that is it, yes. Um, I do have a, a draft of a town meeting and budget calendar that I emailed off to you, um, late this afternoon. Um, if you just take an opportunity over the next day or two or three, take a look at it. Um, I, I don't expect that we're gonna take it up tonight, but it's, it's meant to be a guide. It's, it's, it's stamped draft on each page, but it basically backs away from the day that we know we have to have town meeting pursuant to our bylaw. Know that we need two weeks to post the warrants and then everything backward from there all the way back to tonight's meeting. What it does request of you is that you vote to open the warrant for the annual and special town meetings to, to be open tomorrow morning at nine AM, which is the start of business. And to close the annual pursuant to the bylaw in the town on March 1st and to close the special on April 2nd. And the town meeting to be held on May 4th, which is again pursuant to our bylaw.
Can we change a date on that? Can we close the warrant for the annual on March 3rd instead of March 1st so that it's a day after a Board of Selectmen meeting?
You, you, well, I'm going to say you can't, and then I'm going to tell you that it's your call. You have a bylaw in the town that says the articles for the annual have to be in by March 1st. So by definition, that means the warrant for the annual closes on March 1st. Having said that, you have the ability as a board legally to let something in. The warrant is the, is the creation of, the custody of the Board of Selectmen. So the way I've seen that in the past, Veronica, so people feel that they've got the flexibility to add things, but they're being true to the bylaw, is if you think that there's something that's coming, just put a placeholder in. Just get, you know, it, it can be a, it can be a sticky note that says we're expecting that there's going to be, you know, an XYZ, you know, article and.
Okay, I, I, I don't like that and here's why. Today is the 2nd of February. We have one Board of Selectmen meeting to, for people to get warrant articles to us who might be, you know, whether, you know, whether they're, you know, a commission or a board or whatever, they have one meeting. They, they need to have them into us on the 16th.
But, but they don't actually, Veronica, because under the charter, they have an absolute right to have an article placed. If they are a town entity, board, committee, department, they can have something placed on the warrant for the town meeting per the charter. So they don't need your approval to do so. While they may want it, they, they don't need it.
But they have to have it on there by the first.
They have to have it submitted into the office by the first, not received by the board and acted on by the board.
Well, yeah. And if you're a citizen, however many signatures you need, what is it, eight or 10 for the annual? It's a whole lot more for the special. But if you are a citizen and you want to put something on and you want to, you know, petition it on essentially, you don't even need to petition it. You just need to have, and it needs to be to us then also by the first. Is that true?
I thought it was going on somewhere. I, I, I don't know that that is true. I think that there's some case law and I would defer to Adam and I can whoever getting feedback. I can ask Adam tonight. Before I leave, I can ask Adam to respond to that, but I think that there's a, some constitutional issue with the ability to petition the government that the local bylaw can't stop a petition. I'll defer to Adam to, to get that.
I, I guess I would just say, so we don't have a choice on the March 1st date is what you're suggesting. Other than, well, it becomes picky and choosy after that, you know, ah, I don't like that one, but I like that one. You know, and what gets, not that I think me and Joe and Wayne are going to do that, but there's options for that. There is serious feedback going on.
I think that's Paul. Paul, is that your iPhone?
That's Don. He has to be muted.
Okay, whatever. Anyway, all right. So what's our motion? Move that we.
So it would be move that you call the warrant for the annual and special town meeting open tomorrow, February 3rd at 9:00 AM. And that the warrant for the annual close at 5:00 PM on March 1st. The warrant for the special close at 5:00 PM on April 2nd. And that the meetings be held on May 4th.
I thought that you could keep the warrant for the special open until two weeks before.
No, you have to post it two weeks before. So if you kept it open, there would be no time to actually then create the document, get it vetted by council and get it posted. So that gives us the, the opportunity to actually build the warrant once everything is in.
Okay.
I'll leave that one to you, Ronnie.
You just say, you can say as read.
Grant, I make a motion as read by Jim.
Second.
Wayne, you're muted.
Hey, sorry. I thought it was down here. I was in favor.
Veronica Kell, yes.
Joe Shank, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes. All right, thanks, Jim. 5-4, Board of Selectmen announcements, updates and reports. Does anybody have anything?
I do.
Okay, I don't.
So Talk of the Town is back. We took a break for January. But February 11th at 10:30 in the morning, Talk of the Town, if you want the link, it's, you can call Katie Petrosi at the Senior Center. It's for anybody. You don't have to be a senior. And she will do the Zoom link and that is the talk with a selectman, which happens to be me. So there you go.
Okay, thank you. Reports from Board of Liaisons. I don't have any as of yet. I do have a meeting with the fire chief on Thursday to discuss budget, so I'll have one for the next meeting.
I have nothing.
Me either. I've been going all to grant meetings.
I can tell. 5-6, review and sign payroll, bills, warrants payable out of session. Can I get a motion there?
I make a motion, review, sign payroll and bills payable out of session.
Veronica Kell, second.
I was in favor.
Veronica Kell, yes.
Joe Shank, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes. All right, executive session. So Joe, just do them one at a time.
Executive session, pursuit of General Law C 30A S 21A 2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining session or contract negotiation with non, non-union personnel treasurer collector.
Second.
I was in favor.
Veronica Kell, yes.
Joe Shank, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes. And the next one, Joe, if you could just add on, we will not be returning to open session.
Okay. Executive session pursuit 2, General Law C 30A S 21A 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body and the chair, so declares reference Act May, AFC, AFF, CME, all groups in IAFF, and we will not be returning out of the executive session.
Second.
I was in favor.
Veronica Kell, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes. Oh, sorry, Joe.
Joe Shank, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes. Jim, just a point of order because we got kicked out last time and how are we doing it this time?
Um, well, if people sign off and it's just us in here, we can lock the meeting and that'll be fine. Alternatively, we could just do it the way we did accidentally last week, which is everybody jump back on.
I think that works fine. Then you're the host, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so just dial back in, guys.
All right, we're all done. Just.
Everybody jump off and come back in.
Thank you all for your hard work. Thank you.